For attending, this is our third of our budget hearing. Sarah, can you recognize all the council members that are here and also on the phone?
Same person you have, Mr. Bocowski, Mr. Sipolis, Ms. Viliyagi, Mr. Palmasina, Mr. Pina, Mr. Palmary, Ms. Kritsia, Mr. Walton, Mr. Grisbeck, and Ms. Howell and Ms. Nakary.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the last public hearing on the county's 2025 budget. This evening, we'll be hearing from the administrative branch of the county government regarding their proposed budget for 2025. Public comment will be received by council before the invited guests make their presentation and answer council's questions. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful as everyone else speaks and deserve all time limitations. With that, Sarah, please name the public commenters.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be doing it tonight. We have several, so I'm going to call you up at five at a time. So if you can please come up and line up in order of your name. Jeremy Schaefer, Byron Zidell, Benjamin Shizar, Margaret Thompson, Maura Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Jeremy Schaefer. I've lived in Allegheny County for 25 years, basically the entirety of my adult life. Allegheny County has been very good to me. I got a great education at Carnegie Mellon University. All of my kids were born here. I started and grew a company right here in the city of Pittsburgh. Western Pennsylvania is an amazing place to live. I would say we've got the world's best workforce. We have phenomenal education and cultural institutions, hospitals that are second to none, natural resources all around us and below us, and outdoor activities abounding in every season. We should be one of the fastest-growing regions in the country, but that's not what has happened in my lifetime. In my lifetime, Allegheny County has lost 400,000 people, 25% of our population, while the country as a whole has grown by 58%. So many of our hometown companies have moved or made major investments in other places and not here. One of the main reasons that we have lost population and jobs is a tax and regulatory environment that drives businesses and people away. As I have talked with residents and business owners over the past several weeks, it is very clear to me that the proposed 46.5% property tax increase is a great deal of concern to people of all parties and types. Many have already started to look elsewhere, whether surrounding counties or states, to move or relocate their businesses. I urge you not to raise the property tax, but instead to enact policies that will help spur job growth, job creation, investment, and help our region move forward. I love Allegheny County and Western Pennsylvania. I want to see us succeed. We should work together to help our county and our entire region to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Byron Zidell.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Byron Zidell. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh South Side neighborhood. I'm here today in order to speak in opposition to the new budget proposal by the county executive and the corresponding property tax increase that have been supported by the county executive and some members of this council. To put things in context, I want to remind the council that since 2020, consumer prices in the United States have increased by over 21%, according to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. This inflation affects the most vulnerable people in our county, especially those retirees living on Social Security, disabled veterans and military retirees, and lower-income communities. Coupled with a high-interest rate environment and the impacts of the COVID pandemic that we are now just coming out of, I want to convey how exhausted me and my neighbors are of dealing with these increased costs eating into our paychecks month after month and year after year. During that time, Allegheny County's budget has gone from roughly $960 million in 2020 to a proposed $1.2 billion in 2025, an increase of 25%. More striking is that the county has managed to spend every single dollar of revenue the past three years. This is even more impressive when we consider that at the end of 2023, the county was operating at $891 million bond debt, spending $74 million a year on just servicing that debt. Think about that for a minute. $74 million of taxpayer money doing absolutely nothing but paying interest. The easy thing to do on your end is to raise taxes. What's another few hundred dollars a year when the median household income in the United States is $80,000, according to the census? They won't really notice. Well, I'm taking notice and going through your budget and noticed some interesting things. First of all, there are 53 line items for out-of-county travel, almost $900,000. 112 line items for miscellaneous services. What exactly does that mean? 55 line items for dues and memberships. This sort of shoddy bookkeeping would never pass an audit. A million dollars for equity inclusion, whose department's main goal is to funnel government contracts to non-white or women-owned businesses. There's also the issue of overtime pay. There are dozens of examples of where overtime pay exceeded 50% of a person's regular salary. Two correctional officers received $74,000 of overtime pay on an $81,000 salary. Are there any guardrails in place to ensure the taxpayer isn't getting ripped off? My favorite budget increases are to the county council and county executive. In 2020, for the county executive, it was $492. Now it's 640K, a 30% increase. County council, 1.06 to 1.27, a 20% increase. I strongly encourage you not to pass along the burden that is left by the decrease in commercial real estate valuations onto hard-working, tax-paying residents. Thank you.
Happy Halloween, fellow Democrats. Perhaps calling half the nation fascist Nazi garbage is not an effective political message. Mr. Chair, I rise tonight very concerned about the fiscal stewardship of this county. These meetings are poorly noticed. Most citizens don't know about them but will suffer because of them. Monday, I laid out transformational cuts to the wasteful spending that none of the overpaid staff could seem to find. Tonight, I will focus on new revenue, a new vision, a green new economy with less pollution, free public transit, and lower property income, business, and gas taxes. Progressive populists will not achieve anything with high taxes. However, we must increase revenues. Ask Do Nothing Harrisburg and the useless governor to give you budget flexibility. Initiate county-wide reassess, combined with lower millage and budget compartmentalization. Tax all real estate transactions over 300K. Increase consumption taxes, no exemptions except for feminine hygiene, menstrual, and pregnancy products. Tax alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, gambling, sugary drinks, trans fat processed salty foods, red meat. Tax all gig economy, deliveries, streaming, e-commerce, cable, phone, tickets, which is fun, plane, and discipline. Rental cars, 1% to 2% and nobody will notice, Mr. Chair. All county property that can facilitate new development should. Shut down the death house, I mean jail, and redevelop it. Demolish CCAC Northside and build 1,000 new affordable townhomes. Across from the offices in South Park, build 1,000 luxury units with parking garages. Every underutilized piece of land should be seen as an opportunity to create jobs, wealth, and economic growth. No more dependence on pollution. We should be fining the polluters out of operation. Put the pollution fine money into the Clean Air Fund along with the opioid money to use for health impact mitigation. We are the best-positioned metropolitan service area in America for the 21st century. Build 10,000 new affordable homes and watch. If you build it, they will come. I guarantee it. A new economy focused on housing, infrastructure, solar, wind, battery storage, AI, seniors, arts culture, sports, green spaces, urban farms, pollinator gardens, green manufacturing, creating green union jobs. Over a 10-year period, how much in budget savings, revenue, jobs, wealth, and overall value did I just create in a three-minute speech? I have done my part. Hearing the lesson. May God bless Allegheny County and all who call her home.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Point of privilege.
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I just want you to know that you're the reason why we have the public speaking first this week, because we realized a couple of weeks ago that you should have been first. So we listen to you.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Margaret Thompson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Margaret Thompson, and I am grateful to have the opportunity to speak about a life-changing county budget proposal. I'm a lifelong Allegheny County resident, and I am currently a city Pittsburgh resident, specifically the neighborhood of Carrick. Today, I'm urging you to support the county budget as proposed because I am a rental assistance success story. I am a wife, a worker, a mother of two, and a renter. I am here, sorry, I'm here to represent the 34% of Allegheny County residents who rent their homes. I have been renting in Allegheny County for over 15 years, and in the 15 years of renting, the past four years were particularly tough. During those four years, we experienced our first threat of homelessness. We were living in Moon Township at the time. I was forced to stop working due to COVID closures and having to homeschool my eldest child. Luckily, for the first time in 15 years of renting, there was a reliable rental assistance program that helped cover our arrears and kept us from eviction. In order to prevent homelessness in the future, we moved to a more affordable home in the Carrick neighborhood and relinquished our vehicle to keep costs down. However, my husband lost his job because of COVID-related layoffs. Once again, we were struggling to make ends meet. It took him several months to find employment again, and he lost his unemployment benefits, making it difficult to make the full rent payments. Stress and anxiety ruled my days for weeks on end. My landlord grew impatient and stated that he would evict us if we did not pay the arrears in full. At this time, I had started working for Rent Help Pittsburgh and was made aware of rental assistance programs that I could apply for. I immediately signed up for them and was able to solve my dispute through mediation and ultimately was awarded assistance for my arrears. Rental assistance has allowed us mental capacity to obtain and retain full-time employment. It sets us up to be able to pay our rent and utility bills ahead of time each month. We were able to purchase a vehicle, which allows us to visit family, friends, and transport our children to different social activities. We are off welfare assistance programs, and we are able to save money to mitigate issues in the future. I am one of the many rental assistance success stories, and I hope to not be one of the last. If you take away anything from what I said, I hope it's that most of our neighbors are one layoff, hospitalization, or funeral expense away from housing instability. I understand that the budget comes at a tax increase, but it's such a small price to pay to keep the country stable, I mean, the county stable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Thank you.
Robert Perkins, Joe Ott, Victoria Garrison, Joshua Malloy, Ryan Proff.
Good evening. I'm Maura Jacob, the Policy and Community Impact Officer for the Pittsburgh Foundation. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today in support of the $14 million proposed in this year's budget to sustain the eviction prevention ecosystem in Allegheny County. The Pittsburgh Foundation has long focused on housing stability. As part of its mission to create a vibrant, equitable, and just greater Pittsburgh, the foundation has promoted numerous efforts to improve landlord-tenant relationships, including providing grants that helped launch what are now components of the eviction prevention ecosystem here. We applaud the county executive, Housing Director Nussor, and Director Dalton for prioritizing housing stability in the 2025 budget. Allegheny County's eviction prevention system, including rental assistance, mediation, and legal aid, is among the most effective in the Commonwealth. The infusion of federal money for eviction prevention during the pandemic enabled local providers to achieve this effectiveness by expanding resources, allowing for increased collaboration, and creating incentives for landlords to participate in programming. This proposed budget would ensure this ecosystem does not deteriorate or disappear due to a loss or lag in funding. Eviction was a crisis before the pandemic and is returning to crisis levels now. County landlords have filed over 14,000 eviction petitions since last October, the highest number in any county in the state. The foundation's research into eviction uncovered heartbreaking statistics, including the fact that the average amount of rent owed by the lowest-income tenants faced with expulsion was shockingly small, just $208. There's no indication that the number of eviction filings will decline, but now, the federal money that stabilized 20,000 Pennsylvania households and paid more than 7,000 landlords has run out. The funding proposed in this budget would assist approximately 4,000 Allegheny County households next year, preventing families from being forced from their homes. All sorts of people are confronted with the threat of an eviction, our neighbors who lose a job, who have unexpected medical bills, without income because of caring for a child or parent, and our hard-working neighbors who have simply fallen behind in their bills and with little assistance could get back on track. Eviction also disproportionately affects women, children, and people of color. Studies show that 57% of Pennsylvania households with children are behind in rent, and 59% of eviction petitions are against women. The proposed funding in this budget is an opportunity for county council to proclaim its values, to assert that Allegheny County is a place where residents actively assist each other. The eviction prevention ecosystem developed here prevents families from losing their homes and their stability. It resolves cases so landlords' losses are mitigated or eliminated. By providing stable, predictable funding, you will show that Allegheny County is a community where we take pride in our homes and take care of our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maura.
Robert Perkins.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Perkins. I'm a defense lawyer who started practicing in Allegheny County Criminal Courts about 20 years ago. I'm going to focus my comments on the public defender's office today that I, although listening to everyone else's comments, I've worked with people throughout the county government system, in the jails, in the Department of Human Services, courthouse, Department of Court Records. And my experience is there's extremely hard-working people in every single one of those offices, and I can't imagine you're going to find many areas that cut, if anything, people need a pay raise to recognize their extremely hard work. So with respect to the public defender's office, I'm going to make three points. The first point is this, is that when you're considering the public defender's frankly modest proposed increase in budget, you need to understand that we're still playing catch-up after decades of failed investment. Investment that's gotten us sued more than once for our failure to adequately protect people's rights, and which cost us a lot of money in legal fees. To illustrate where we're at, consider that in 2019, not that far, not that long ago, the Sixth Amendment Center did a national study of public defense spending, and it used a metric of measuring per capita spending. And ultimately, the 2019 figures show that Allegheny County's public defense spending was on par with the state of Mississippi, the state that ranks dead last in the country in funding. So we don't want to be dead last, and we don't want to be tied with Mississippi when it comes to issues of human rights. The second issue is that the public defender's office has more talented lawyers than they've ever had before. I'm certain I never would have got hired there now, based on my credentials 20 years ago, because they've upped their game. But the reality is, is you can be the best lawyer in the world. If you have way too many cases, you can't do a good enough job to protect people's rights. And people deserve adequate treatment in the criminal justice system. They cannot get that with attorneys whose caseloads are triple the national standards, and that's what exists today in Allegheny County. The third point I wanted to make is that, and this might be counterintuitive, but it's true, based on the data, that investing in public defense saves taxpayer money, reduces incarceration, and advances public safety. Judge Vashevich gave a presentation to you all a couple of days ago. She talked about the costs of putting a person in jail, $177 per day, which translates to $65,000 per year to put one person in Allegheny County jail. We can't afford that, and it doesn't work from a rehabilitation standpoint. So, you know, how do I make this point? There was a study about, they studied 15 years of data in Bronx, New York. They looked at their public defense systems, and they had two public defenders there, one that was adequately resourced, one that was not. And the public defender's office that did, that was invested in, they got better results for their clients, and that helped avoid 1.1 million days in jail, and that saved taxpayers $165 million in jail housing costs. And most importantly, did that with no harm to public safety. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe Otti. I'm also a defense attorney and also a former public defender. I never worked with Rob, but have a lot of respect for what he does. And I told him that I was interested in coming here after I read the Trib article about First Assistant District Attorney Spangler's comments to the county council. You know, I don't know if it's appropriate to respond directly to somebody else's comments, especially a row officer who's very concerned about her own budget and who is honestly dealing with some really tough budget issues. But what I found disturbing in her comments was the way in which the district attorney's office, in front of you, pitted their own budget against the public defender's office, as if it was a zero-sum game. I thought that was incredibly inappropriate, especially given the fact that, in theory, in theory, the public defender's office and the district attorney's office work hand-in-hand. Now, obviously, you don't want defense attorneys working for the district attorney's office. You don't want defense attorneys working for the judiciary, but the public defender's office goes into courtrooms, they make deals with the district attorney's office, they're called plea agreements, and that's how 95% of the cases are resolved in the county. I've watched these public hearings on the budget every year for the past eight years, and I've never seen the district attorney's office take swipes at the PD's office. And why would they? The public defender's office in Allegheny County has been historically underfunded. And finally, finally, over the last seven or eight years, roughly five and a half years, there's been some change in leadership that has caused an increase in the budget in the public defender's office, an increased attention to the actual functioning of what happens on a day-to-day basis, and the importance of each person having their case handled individually, not treated as a number who is assigned a file and then shuffled through the system. Now, Ms. Spangler's comments would suggest to you that that's how the public defender's office should treat their clients. And she did this by way of talking about the number of cases. Ms. Spangler told you about the number of cases that the district attorney's office handles on a yearly basis, and she emphasized that 99.99% are handled by the district attorney's office. And then she talked about the number of cases that are handled by the public defender's office. First, numerically, she's incorrect. Far more cases are handled by the public defender's office than she gives credit. And why is that? That's because every case is screened by the public defender's office because they're charged with a crime, and initially, private attorneys don't show up right away. And then, second of all...
Please wrap it up. Please wrap it up.
Absolutely. Second of all, she's incorrect because they're not cases in the public defender's office. They're clients. They're people who have been arrested. They're your sons, your daughters, your aunts, your uncles, your neighbors, and they're not just a number in the public defender's office. And that's why I think it's pretty irresponsible for the district attorney's office to try and pit the public defender's office against the DA's office.
Thank you.
Victoria Garrison, Joshua Malloy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joshua Malloy. I'm the chapter director of Pittsburgh United. I'm here today with my colleagues and partners in the struggle in support of County Executive's and Emirato's 2025 Allegheny Budget Proposal. We believe County Executive Emirato's initial budget offering positions the county to find ways to be smarter with its money, and will put the county back on track to build Allegheny and Allegheny for all, without mass layoffs or cuts in service for residents. Our communities deserve high-quality services needed to thrive in Allegheny County. And with the budget proposal, we can maintain these core services, including answering over 1,000,901 calls per year, while improving technology, improving technology communications for our first responders, staffing our nine-county parks and four-county pools, which had record attendance this past summer, maintaining more than 400 miles, 400 miles of roads and 500 bridges, administering elections two times a year, and we know how important that is, every year for more than 900,000 registered voters in Allegheny County. So while, while so much of the public discourse has been about the millage point increase including, included in this proposal, the reality is that this increase is longer overdue and still considerably less in comparison to our neighboring municipalities, sorry. As of this group, how many of you own homes above the median income in Pittsburgh, in Allegheny County? In plain language, this is an issue that impacts the wealthier few of us in Allegheny County, and has been presented as a potential major barrier for working-class folks when it simply would not be. Everyone in this room knows this fact. This budget proposal comes at a time when the entire region is facing challenging economic conditions. The past few years have shown that major, sorry, that major, has shown that major crisis can change the outlook of all of our lives without warning. But the reality in Allegheny County is, and especially that, but the reality is Allegheny County is in a specially precarious financial spot and has been for years. Decisions by the previous administration made it so, made it so that tough calls would eventually need to be made here. And this budget proposal provides a framework for how the county administration can navigate our needs and come out stronger on the other side. County Executive Emirato's proposal also prioritizes the needs of our most vulnerable neighbors by making important investments that will strengthen our county. At a time when rising highs are shaking the foundation of our housing stability, County Executive Emirato's budget proposal makes key investments in overall affordable housing, home repair, eviction prevention, and rent stabilization to ensure working families have the resources needed to stay in their homes. Building on existing initiatives, including 500...
Please wrap it up.
...days, this budget has, this budget for 2025 represents the new beginning of a new administration addressing structural issues and setting a new course for the county. We stand in support of Ace Emirato's budget proposal, and come December, we urge county council to approve this new way forward for the people of Allegheny County.
Thank you, sir.
Is Brian here? Brian Julia Lee, Allison DeLucia, that's the same, Jennifer Rafferty, Brian Knuckles, and Tanisha Long are the next five.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Julia, and I'm a resident of Friendship, and I'm here today to speak in support of the proposed budget. I have worked at Rent Help Pittsburgh for about a year and a half now, which is part of a larger eviction prevention collaborative within the county. Before that, from 2018 to 2021, I worked at a domestic violence shelter also in the county with women and children who were experiencing homelessness. And when I think about where we are today in the eviction prevention landscape compared to what it was in 2018 and 2019, it is a completely different world, and I want to give a lot of credit to DHS, housing advocates, and organizations that have worked very hard and very creatively to develop one of the most effective eviction prevention systems in the Commonwealth during the pandemic. One of the most common reasons landlords will file for eviction is non-payment of rent. And you might be thinking, well, why didn't the tenant pay their rent? And I think if you ask and you listen with a sincere interest in the person, most of the time, they will tell you. And I often leave these conversations with the realization that what's happened to them could happen to me, and it can really happen to anyone. You know, these are people who've had jobs for years that are now no longer able to work yet because they've become disabled, and now they're in this months-long holding pattern trying to apply for disability benefits, but their rent is still due. And then there are others who have experienced deaths of their loved ones, and in wanting to bury them with dignity, have made a choice that was obvious to them at the time to put whatever money they had towards a proper funeral, despite the rent being due. And the median rent in Pittsburgh has increased by almost 100% since the last time the county had a property tax increase 12 years ago. So it's more expensive than it's ever been to fall in hard times, and not everyone can afford to pull themselves out without help. The federal funding that the county received for rental assistance during the pandemic has been life-changing for both tenants and landlords, and while this funding has been exhausted, the need for assistance still exists. Across the county and across the state, we're seeing eviction filings rise to the levels they were at before the pandemic. Eviction prevention is needed more than ever, and the $14 million proposed for eviction prevention will assist approximately 4,000 households in this county, 4,000 households that might become homeless otherwise. And I believe that you, as county council members, have the opportunity to meet the moment by passing this budget, including that $14 million for eviction prevention. Even if you haven't personally experienced what it's like to be behind on your rent and to make choices that nobody should have to make, know that you represent constituents who have. I urge you to keep them in mind and to know that funding for eviction prevention will ensure that our neighbors in Allegheny County will have a stable place to call home. Thank you.
Hello, and thanks for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Allison, and I'm a resident of Shaler Township, and I'm urging you to support the county budget as proposed. I am a homeowner, a worker, a wife, and a parent of school-aged children in Allegheny County. My family benefits from the services provided by the county and from our local school district and municipality. In our home... In our home, we've taught our children that as a member of a community, it's the responsibility of each of us to contribute and support our community. And one of the ways that we do this is by paying taxes. I've worked at Rent Help Pittsburgh since 2020, and after working for 12 years in industry and five years at my community library. In this time, I've worked intimately and directly with mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, grandparents, and grandchildren who rent to live in Allegheny County, connecting them with rental assistance, legal assistance, and myriad other stabilization resources to keep them in their homes. I'm thinking a lot about the many single minority mothers who were forced out of the workforce during COVID, staying home with their children who schooled virtually or to care for sick family members. We've had countless success stories of helping our most vulnerable citizens achieve stability for their households. As such, I'm particularly passionate about the $14 million proposed budget for rent stabilization and eviction program, eviction prevention. The eviction prevention program does work best when there's dedicated and predictable funding for rental assistance. This was not the case in the years prior to the pandemic. The Department of Human Services, housing advocates, and organizations working to keep people housed have developed one of the most effective eviction prevention systems in the Commonwealth, and we're eager to continue to build upon that work. Now, rates of eviction filings are back to pre-pandemic levels, and the federal funding the county received for rental assistance is set to expire. The $14 million proposed in the budget is vital and will assist over 4,000 households. We need to ensure our neighbors have a stable and safe place to call home. 34% of Allegheny County's population are renters. As Julia had mentioned, in 2012, when our property tax increase last occurred, the median rent in Pittsburgh was $745. As of June of this year, median rent is now $1,484, which is a nearly 100% increase since 2012. Our neighbors who are renting are carrying a heavy burden, and as a homeowner, I feel like it's my responsibility to help shoulder this burden so that all of our residents have a fair shot at housing stability and community services. I support the budget as proposed, and I urge you to do so as well. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Raffanon Kennedy. I live in County Council District 11 in the Point Breeze neighborhood. As a resident, voter, and taxpayer, I'm here today to express my support for the county executive's proposed budget. Your sheet says that I am with Rent Help. I am not. I'm here representing myself and my family, though shout out to Rent Help and all the people here talking about housing affordability. County Executive Sarah Emirato's proposed 2025 budget makes the investments we need to deliver the core county services we rely on: keep our families and communities safe, invest in our main streets and small businesses, grow the population and tax base of Allegheny County, and protect low-income homeowners and seniors. The county executive's budget is a down payment on an Allegheny County that works for all of us. I'm particularly excited to support the investments this budget makes in Allegheny County's workforce and care for people. It was my honor to be a co-chair of the county executive's talent transition team. There are so many talented and hard-working people in county government, and the leaders of departments and their staff need both the resources to retain great employees who serve our residents and to make sure their critical programs are funded. The budget also supports affordable housing, childcare, workforce training, small businesses and economic development, public transit, and a cleaner environment. These are things that help us as residents in our daily lives and that matter to me as a working mom. It is heartening to see a budget that invests in the basic things we need and takes care of all of our neighbors. I love all the moms here saying, "We teach our children to share, and that's what we should be doing with our budget." This budget addresses the most pressing needs of our residents in a comprehensive and responsive way, and it also comes with a tax increase. But we must recognize that this is the responsible way forward. As pandemic federal dollars end, as Republicans in Harrisburg refuse to invest in our counties, and we face a deficit without having had incremental increases over time, I'm willing to chip in a little more to make sure this county works for my family and takes care of all of our neighbors. The county executive's budget makes the investments we need to make Allegheny County work for all of us, and I urge you to support it.
Thank you.
My name's Tanisha Long. I'm County Council District 12. Hey, Bob. And I'm here today to speak on what I believe is the most important part of the budget, which is the Public Defender's Office and the commitments that we're making towards public safety. I must admit that I am minimally to not sympathetic to those with multimillion-dollar homes who want public safety but do not want to chip in and do their part to get the public safety that they want funded. Right now, the people who are being most affected by our county's failure to adequately fund the Public Defender's Office are people who are brown, people who are black, people who are indigent, people who do not have the funds or resources to properly defend themselves in a court of law. And what we saw during the court presentation is that the time from a case being filed to actually going in front of the court is increasing. So these are people who are often sitting in the jail. These are people who have lost their homes while they're sitting in the jail, their apartments, their jobs for crimes that they may or may not have committed. That creates a trickle-down problem where we're having to overfund our jail, where we're having to solve the problems caused by the instability of incarceration, which include, you know, being unhoused, you have people who get taken off of medications. It puts a strain on public services and human health. And that's because we do not value freedom as much as we value the idea of public safety through criminal legal defense, criminal legal prosecution. And that's a problem. When I look at public safety, I want to make sure that my neighbors have somewhere to sleep. I want to make sure that the place that they're sleeping is not the Allegheny County Jail. I want to make sure that if they ever see themselves in front of a judge or a jury, that they are adequately defended. I'm appalled by how little we spend on our Public Defender's Office and by how much we spend for our District Attorney's Office. It's beyond inequitable, but at the end of the day, the net sum is we have a rising jail population. It's up 8% this month than it was last month. I mean, this time last year at this month. And pre-pandemic, we'd managed to get that down. We had cases moving faster because we recognized there was a public health safety risk. And what I argue is that not properly providing criminal defense funding creates another public health safety risk, where you have people who are over-incarcerated, you have people who are living on the street, you have people whose freedoms and rights are being violated. A lot of those people will walk out of the jail tomorrow with no charges, withdrawn cases, but lose significant portions of their life. We have a responsibility to help the county executive enact on the thing she promised to do when she was elected, which was invest in public safety. And that includes and should prioritize criminal defense and making sure that everybody's human and civil rights are not being violated, and that they have the money to actually engage in the process that will allow them to eventually get their freedom. Thank you.
The staffing crisis at our jail. As we are sitting here talking about the county's budget, there are many correctional officers right now at our jail on their third double shift, working 16 hours a day and 80 hours in five days for months. This is inhumane and wrong and violates almost every HR principle one can think of. Of our 58 recruits hired since September of last year, 36 of the recruits have left employment, primarily because of the staffing crisis. How does this make our officers feel to see these numbers and know that help is not on the way, just more forced overtime? Our officer's life expectancy is 61. I have computed the numbers. Your life expectancy is 77. You can look forward to retirement. Our officers and their families live in a world of uncertainty and fear about their future. The suicide rate of correctional officers is seven times the national average. One of our officers committed suicide at the age of 34. Research studies on stress have found the job of a county jail correction officer to be among the most stressful jobs in our country. You are aware that our county controller has found in their audit of our jail that we need 100 more officers. Our jail continues to violate the referendum because we do not have enough officers. We have remained fixed on the cause of the forced overtime problem is abuse of FMLA. We have been saying this for quite some time now. And what has changed? The problem is, we do not have enough officers. We need to get out of this hole of all this forced overtime. Our jail census is increasing, not decreasing. This budget needs to reflect that County Council has digested the numbers I have provided, and the County Council is thinking of the many families of our correctional officers who are in crisis. Officers are missing out on the critical events of their children's lives: baseball games, school plays, birthdays, graduation. I am asking the County Council, including the budget, a provision for double time instead of time and a half for any officer working all these excessive overtime and incentive for no call-offs. These two incentives will raise the morale of our officers and their families. It will reward the families financially for their sacrifices that they have made and give them more flexibility to manage the many needs a family has with basically an absence of one spouse. It will significantly reduce the amount of forced overtime the officers experience. Please seriously consider what I've said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Sadie Sterner Restivo. I am a resident of Allegheny County residing in Collier Township, and I am the Executive Director of Allegheny County's Soul Rape Crisis Center, Pittsburgh Action Against Rape. I am here to express strong support for the county executive's proposed budget, which is essential to address the county's deficit and protect critical services that uphold the safety, dignity, and resiliency of our community. This budget is not just about fiscal responsibility. It is a lifeline for organizations like Pittsburgh Action Against Rape and the clients that we work with. PAR provides irreplaceable services to over 3,000 survivors of sexual violence annually and 24/7 crisis intervention and counseling to legal advocacy and prevention education. For many survivors, PAR is the first and only resource they find to reclaim a sense of safety, justice, and hope. The services we offer are essential, and any reduction in funding could leave the most vulnerable citizens without access to the support they need and deserve. PAR, like many human service agencies, has faced increased demands for services while our state and federal fundings are being cut. It is important to note, while the county already supports PAR, we currently, our current level of funding is not enough to meet the growing demand for services. We urgently need more support than what is currently allocated as rising client numbers and a lack of state funding have stretched our resources thin. The proposed millage increase, the first increase since 2013, will enable the Department of Human Services and contracted agencies to sustain and expand their services, helping to ensure that no individual or family falls through the cracks. By investing in human services, budget, and organizations like PAR, the county is showing support for survivors while enhancing public safety, strengthening our communities, and investing in a healthier, more resilient county. While concerns about tax increases are understandable, the true cost of failing to fund these services is far greater. Without this budget, PAR and other human service organizations may be forced to cut back or close critical programs, leave survivors without support, and jeopardizing the safety of our entire community. Cutting funding here isn't just an economic choice. It's a decision with real human consequences that would leave those who have been traumatized feeling even more isolated and unsupported. I strongly urge the council to approve this budget. It is a powerful declaration that Allegheny County stands with survivors, values community safety, and believes the rights of every person to live with dignity and security. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abby Ray Lacome. I'm a Pittsburgh resident, and I'm the Executive Director of Rent Help Pittsburgh, which provides living wage jobs to 19 Allegheny County residents and two Westmoreland residents, and helps prevent thousands of families from being evicted every year in Allegheny County. This prevention of their eviction prevents them from ending up among the many, many that we see on our streets and along our rivers right now. We do this through our landlord-tenant mediation program operated with Just Mediation Pittsburgh, our Lawyer of the Day program, which is a right-to-counsel model that we have launched in four courts in the city of Pittsburgh, and our Help Desk. As you've seen, I have many colleagues here tonight, and they are all very excited to talk about the necessity of the $14 million for rental assistance and eviction prevention programming, and how these dollars will be used to benefit 34% of Allegheny County residents who are renters, and the thousands of landlords that benefit from these funds being available. I want to therefore actually take this time to talk about the 2.2 millage tax adjustment that is necessary for the continued operation of vital county services. Since 2012, as many of my colleagues have said, median rents in Allegheny County have increased almost 100%. While our county property taxes have remained stagnant, this millage increase should have been applied annually over the previous 12 years, and doing so would have resulted in a paltry $3 per month increase to most homeowners. Shamefully, it wasn't, and now you have an obligation to address this mismanagement that was brought on by former county administrations and former counselors. Their unwillingness to protect the fiscal health of our county is something that you are now charged with addressing and correcting. I appreciate the perceived risks you face by taking on this necessary tax adjustment. Many of you, I'm sure, are reasonably nervous for your next election when you vote in favor of a tax adjustment that keeps county services operating. However, it's times like these that test the integrity of our elected officials, and I believe that you will make the right decision by supporting the continued functioning of the services that we all rely upon. We're not talking about a new expansion of county services. We're talking about the continuation of basic programs. Everyone expects to be there when they need them. And as you've all heard today, all of the essential agencies funded by this budget are experiencing shortfalls in funding and resources. Folks like to say their taxes are too high until the lack of essential services they assume our government provides, such as mental and behavioral health, emergency rental assistance, a public defender, become a problem in their personal life. At that point, when you find those services lacking, you say, "Why would I even pay taxes? What do I get for them?" So I hope that you all will be the leaders in this space to recognize if you want a functional government, you have to pay for the functional government. And you cannot be the self-fulfilling prophecy of cutting the funds that are needed for all of us in this room to do the great work that we do to support the smallest among our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Helen Gerhart. I own a home in North Point Breeze, which I am, I now know, thanks to Bethany's tool, I'd be paying an additional $133 of tax. I am so glad I organized for Sarah Emirato because she's going to hold me to paying my fair share, maybe even a small fraction of my fair share when I consider those who are now paying 100% more in rent in our communities. So this budget reflects the values that I campaigned for Sarah. That's why I organized for Sarah, is because she stands up for investing in eviction prevention, public transit, public defenders, 911 first responders, parks, roads and bridges, elections, childcare, Department of Human Services. This is integrity, to invest in these needs and values. I served as Chair of the City-County Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force back in between 2013 and 2017. And we developed recommendations which included things like just mediation. I am profoundly grateful to have worked with the eviction prevention team during the pandemic, and their work actually absolutely saved so many lives during COVID. So many people who were evicted during COVID were far more vulnerable to the, you know, what we saw happen across so much of our nation and in our county. So Sarah Emirato, as she was addressing the need for this budget, she said, "People are asking for so much more." And the group... And the group that I'm part of, the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition, we've been asking for more for a truly inclusive public process so that we can together prepare for climate change in all of its different aspects, and so that people most impacted by climate change can be part of that process and help set the priorities for the policies and the funding that are going to affect them. So I ask any council to get behind these values expressed in this budget and to make sure that the people all across this county that can't be here tonight have their needs met in a just and equitable way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mairead. I'm a renter, and I live in Bloomfield, and I'm here to speak in favor of passing the county budget as proposed. The proposed budget takes fiscal responsibility seriously, and it exemplifies the priorities we need to invest in as a county to ensure that all residents, including our most vulnerable neighbors, can thrive. I strongly believe that it's my government's responsibility to provide services to myself and my fellow residents, and I'm happy to pay taxes that contribute to these services. I call upon my fellow residents to find the generosity to do the same. As a staff member for Rent Help Pittsburgh, I am particularly enthusiastic to voice my support for the 14 million proposed budget for rental stabilization and eviction prevention. I work within the mediation program that offers a chance for landlords and tenants to resolve their disputes out of court. This program is so important because the alternative, eviction through a court, can be deadly. The National Institute of Health shows that an eviction filing without a judgment was associated with a 19% increase in mortality, and eviction with a judgment was associated with a 40% increase in mortality risk. This week, I worked with tenants who were at risk of homelessness because of a temporary hardship. Tenants this week received rental assistance for arrears caused by job loss, health issues, a loss of a family member to a tragedy. COVID-era funding supported them, and it's been a lifesaving tool to prevent displacement and support housing stability. The proposed budget ensures that when COVID supports expire, which they will, the tenants will not be left without assistance to support themselves out of a crisis. Resource navigation, landlord-tenant mediation, and legal assistance in the form of the Lawyer for a Day program are proven interventions that collectively need to be sustained. While I support the county council approving the budget with 14 million dedicated for rental stabilization and eviction prevention, dedicating 20 million would create a truly robust system to serve nearly 7,000 households. County council is being asked to consider an increased millage rate for homeowner property taxes. This equates to a tax increase of the home's assessed value times .0022. The greatest impact would be on homeowners in areas that the Allegheny County Community Need Index identified as low resource need. Homeowners in these areas can easily absorb these costs. Other neighborhoods like Braddock and Rankin, identified as moderate to high need for services by DHS, may actually experience tax decreases based on the assessed property value. An estimated 8% of homeowners would experience a tax decrease. To offset the tax increase, costs incurred by owner occupants, the proposed budget also includes an increase of the homestead exemption from $18,000 to $21,000, which I support. The proposed budget calls upon our neighbors to equitably contribute to the well-being of our county. And the city of Pittsburgh has committed millions of dollars to housing stabilization and extension of pandemic-era supports. I hope to see the county show the same commitment, and I urge you to vote in favor of this budget as proposed.
Thank you.
Haley?
Hello. My name is Haley Pasion. I am a resident of the city of Pittsburgh. I live in Mount Washington. I am here today to comment in favor of the proposed county budget. As many others have mentioned tonight, we have not seen a property tax increase in the county in over a decade. The former county executive knew this was coming but chose not to pass any tax increases during his tenure. Incremental tax increases probably would have been an easier pill to swallow, but that is not the moment we are in anymore. The county is in a deficit. Increased revenue needs to come from somewhere to provide the services the county is expected to provide for its residents. Housing is an asset. It's expected to appreciate. That's why people buy it. And it's pretty ludicrous to expect that your property taxes will never increase. The proposed increase is expected to cost the average homeowner about $15 per month. I think about -- I can think about a lot of things that cost $15 per month even more that people buy: Netflix without ads is one of them, Amazon Prime membership, going to Starbucks a couple times a week. Our government relies on a healthy tax base in order to fund programs and services that keep our society functioning. As a resident of our county, my role and all of our role is to contribute to the tax base in a meaningful way. I'm also speaking today as someone who works with some of our most vulnerable neighbors. I am a court resource navigator at Rent Help Pittsburgh. On a daily basis, I'm working with tenants who are on the brink of eviction, often due to a failure to pay rent, which is never that simple. I'm speaking with tenants every single day who have fallen behind, usually due to a circumstance out of their control. With rents increasing nearly 100% since the last property tax increase in 2012, even I, with a living wage job, am a paycheck or two away from not being able to afford my rent. I recently worked with a tenant who was being evicted from public housing because her son, who was her payee for her benefits, wasn't paying her rent. The proposed budget includes $14 million allocated to eviction prevention efforts. As many have mentioned, Allegheny County has been phenomenal at providing rental assistance to our neighbors through federal rental assistance, but that -- those programs are ending. That funding is running out. We are currently facing an affordable housing crisis and a homelessness crisis in Allegheny County, which I am sure you are all very aware of, and a lack of reliable rental assistance programs, which would be the case if this budget is not passed, is only going to make these crises worse. I am in full support of the county executive's proposed budget, and I am asking you, as our elected leaders, to consider both the immediate and the long-term detrimental effects of refusing to pass this budget on the constituents you are meant to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak here before this council. I'm here to ask you to pass this budget. It's my first time addressing this council. I am a resident and a taxpayer of a Harrah Township. Thank you. And I had a lot of things to say, but after hearing all these people, it's basically very simple. I understand that the budget, the county has been underfunded and relying on surplus and external funds. I am more than happy to pay $20 to help other people not going through what they are going through now. I am a mother in a family of six. I have two jobs, but if paying $20 a month is what it takes to have 911 fully functional, bridges inspected, childcare, early education, and after-school programs, I will gladly, gladly do it. So I urge you to approve it. And I do this for all, a bunch of selfish reasons. I would rather pay $20 to have a bridge fixed than to pay on a hospital bill or to mourn whatever child, even if it's not mine. And furthermore, if paying $20 is what it means for Margaret Thompson to continue to be a success story, then please charge me $20 or $30 or $40. So I urge you to consider this and approve this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Evvy. I am a resident on the North Side, and I work for Rent Help Pittsburgh with the Lawyer of the Day program since October 2022. I am urging the council member to support the 14 million in eviction prevention and rental assistance. I've worked out of the four largest filing courts in the city, and I cannot emphasize enough how critical the need is. Eviction filings and mass filings at that are on a rise and back to pre-pandemic levels. Evictions hurt tenants and landlords, and many are preventable. Evictions are an incredibly quick process. Without legal advice, you might be evicted from your home within 21 days from your first court hearing. The shelters are incredibly impacted, and having an eviction on your record makes it nearly impossible to find housing, let alone housing that is habitable. Oftentimes, when I meet tenants in court, they're just a couple of behinds -- months behind in rent. And landlords and tenants, they often have good relationships, and they just need access to rental assistance and other resources. One of the most common things I hear landlords say to me in court is that they do not want to kick anyone out of their homes. And so when we're able to surround tenants with resources, including reliable and accessible rental assistance, and help bridge the communication, we're really helping everyone. And like I said, evictions hurt both landlords and tenants. Unit vacancies require landlords to spend the time and money to clear everything out, repair damages, find new tenants. And one study by Garbo and Rosen in 2019 found that vacancies caused by eviction cost landlords up to two months of rent on top of additional costs to ready the unit for the next tenant. So I've been in court, and I've seen and probably continue to see really horrifying violations of tenants' rights, such as no access to heat and water. I've met tenants who will sleep with bags on their head so that mice don't bite at their faces, excessive fees, et cetera. Tenants have to be put in an impossible place. They either miss court and get a judgment or lose their jobs because they have to go to court. I've seen people get illegally locked out. I've seen tenants spend months up to years trying to get their subsidies corrected. So again, addressing these issues and human rights helps landlords and tenants. And the outcomes for the Lawyer of the Day program in the city, they speak for itself. We have over 65% favorable outcome rate. That's withdrawn cases settled or dismissed or judged for defendant compared to 14% of favorable outcome rate per the city. So when it comes to even when they do get a judgment, we -- up to 80% of it gets satisfied with rental assistance. So we're not asking for a new or flashy program, but to continue doing what works for tenants. So I feel like, I strongly feel we're only as good as the resources we invest in our neighborhoods. In the Lawyer of the Day, we see disproportionate eviction filing against Black women with children.
Please wrap it up.
So we need to put our resources towards taking care of everyone in Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia?
Hi, thanks. Yes, I'm Julia Mentee. I'm a resident of Allegheny County. I'm a member of the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition, and I am here to talk about the proposed budget. And as Helen said earlier, we have the audacity to come and say, "We need a little bit more for climate action in this budget." And I'll tell you our thoughts about that. So I know that this draft budget does propose funding for staffing increases to the Department of Sustainability and Green Initiatives, which we think is great news. But there are some other things that we're going to need to make this a strong and inclusive process of getting a climate action plan for Allegheny County that actually works for us. We're going to need the establishment of a Climate Action Plan Community Task Force that will work in partnership with the Department of Sustainability. And that is going to need to be with stipends to participants from environmental justice communities to reimburse them for their time, expertise, and commitment to the project. We're going to need funding for accessible, well-ventilated spaces for public meetings on transit lines, including in a range of environmental justice and disinvested communities across the county. We're going to need, in order to be inclusive, we're going -- those meetings are going to need to provide food, childcare, and language and ASL interpretation. And we're also going to need to fund quality surveys for feedback from county residents on climate action plan-related issues, including in environmental justice in historically divested communities. We're going to need to fund canvassing and database access so that that canvassing can be effective, and we're going to need to do extensive advertising of climate action plan community meetings and public input opportunities, including radio, TV, social media, mailers, flyers, and posters. So when I come and say that we need more money for climate action, I want to just share a personal story that I am from Pittsburgh, but I moved to Swananoa, North Carolina for college, and I'm really emotional about the damage that we have seen happen to western North Carolina. Over 100 people in that area have died and lost their homes and their communities. And beyond that, it's estimated that it has caused $53 billion of damage. So if you think that $1.2 billion budget that's being proposed as a spending plan is high, then imagine $53 billion of damage in our region, not just the, like, imagination of lost lives and homes. So I wanted to leave you with that. That's why we need to fund the Climate Action Plan Justice Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emily Neff. I'm an Allegheny County resident, living in the North Side neighborhood of the city of Pittsburgh. I'm the Public Policy Director at Trying Together, an early childhood nonprofit in the region, supporting childcare providers, early childhood educators, and families through community resources, professional growth opportunities, and advocacy. Our executive director, Kara Simonello, served as one of the co-chairs of the Education and Workforce Development Committee and the All-In Transition Committee. The proposed budget offers an incredible opportunity for Allegheny County, and we urge council members to continue investments in childcare. The progress for young children, families, and our region's economic growth depends on it. Allegheny County residents value giving children a strong start through accessible and affordable childcare. Nearly 19,000 county residents shared their priorities through the All-In Community Survey and made it clear that access and affordable childcare and increased pay for childcare workers matters. When the early learning sector struggles, there is a ripple effect. Our working families struggle, our businesses struggle, our local economy struggles. In a September 2024 survey from the Start Strong PA campaign, childcare providers in Allegheny County reported 373 open positions, resulting in 128 closed classrooms. If those programs were fully staffed, more than 2,977 more children could be served. This is just a snapshot of 20% of the county. Families in Allegheny County rely on childcare and early learning programs. Childcare providers are the workforce behind the workforce and necessary infrastructure for economic development and for Allegheny County to realize its full potential. We're grateful for the investments that Allegheny County has made in childcare thus far. In January of 2024, the Allegheny County Executive directed an additional $500,000 to expand the Allegheny County Childcare Matters Pilot Program, which enabled additional families on a waiting list to receive subsidized childcare. This program currently supports up to 400 children, but there is still more work to be done. If the program was funded, it has the potential to cover up to 15,000 children in our county. We support the proposed budget to invest in the services needed for children, families, and our communities to thrive. The impact of continued investment for childcare will allow the county to unlock more state and federal funding and will enable more children and families to have access to affordable, high-quality childcare. The proposed budget has the opportunity to keep investing in our region's working families and youngest children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gabby Gray. I am a Homewood native and resident, and I urge you to support the Allegheny County budget as proposed. I've been an advocate for water justice in the city of Pittsburgh for nearly a decade, and my organizing journey has brought me to my current role with Pittsburgh United. Having been directly impacted by Pittsburgh's lead crisis, I have been engaged in environmental and housing justice advocacy for the better part of a decade. As some of you may know, October is Lead Awareness Month, and as we all know, there is no safe level of lead for our families, for our children, or for our neighbors to be exposed to. County Executive Inomorato understands this and included extensive support for the Lead Safe Home Program Federal HUD Grant application to expand capacity and double the number of homes we are reaching with that program. This builds on the multi-year HUD grant that Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh were awarded in 2018, which has abated lead from over 250 homes. The correlation between lead-contaminated homes and negative future outcomes and my organizing journey has brought me to my current role with Pittsburgh United. Having been directly impacted by Pittsburgh's lead crisis, I have been engaged in environmental and housing justice advocacy for the better part of a decade. As some of you may know, October is Lead Awareness Month. And as we all know, there is no safe level of lead for our families, for our children, or for our neighbors to be exposed to. County Executive Intermerato understands this and included extensive support for the Lead Safe Home Program Federal HUD Grant application to expand capacity and double the number of homes we are reaching with that program. This builds on the multi-year HUD grant that Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh were awarded in 2018, which has abated lead from over 250 homes. The correlation between lead-contaminated homes and negative future outcomes is very well documented, and we stand with people fighting to restore their lives and their health, as well as their safety in our cities. While we cannot reverse the damage that has been done to Allegheny County families and communities impacted by the lead crisis, we can fight for and secure the resources needed to build the healthy futures our communities deserve, and this budget does just that. The city's housing crisis can't be discussed without acknowledging Pittsburgh's racial equity gap, where our black neighbors have been hit the hardest. Our housing crisis disproportionately affects this traditionally marginalized group, exacerbating existing disparities, deepening our city's woeful segregation, and driving a loss of 10,000 black residents between 2010 and 2020. Black homeownership is falling, and since 2015, the Pittsburgh homeowners have lost more than a 10% decline and is continuing to count into higher numbers. I am proud to stand here today with my colleagues and neighbors, standing up for myself, housing security, as well as for those living in environmental justice communities, and ultimately in support of County Executive Intermerato's 2025 budget proposal. This proposal puts us on a path towards building in Allegheny County for all, and we implore Allegheny County Council to join us in seeing this through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Sullivan. Maddox.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Maddox, and I would deeply appreciate it if you would provide the $14 million toward eviction prevention. I feel rental assistance really helps and provides a shoulder to lean on for many people and families. If rental assistance and eviction prevention was underfunded, a plethora of people would be homeless, maybe even myself. If these resources weren't available, I wouldn't be where I am now. I could have been left on the streets, my parents struggling to find a place to stay, and that probably could have affected me in the long run, and maybe I wouldn't be able to go to college like I want to. I could have a terrible life, which happens and could happen to many others. The median rent of $1,484 is not helping, but the $14 million could help people survive the burden of this high monthly cost. I would like you to deeply consider contributing towards eviction prevention. Thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you very much.
How can I go after that, right? But here I am. My name is Monica Teresa. I'm the Executive Director of Casa San Jose, a nonprofit organization in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm also a resident of Allegheny County, living in District 12. I work full-time, so does my husband. We own several rental properties, and if this tax increase will affect somebody, it will affect us. And we're happy. We're happy to be able to pay into a system that we know is desperately in need of help. I'm here today in support of the county budget. We stand at a pivotal moment where investing in our community is essential for its prosperity. As our county's demographics evolve, we must align our investments with the diverse needs of our residents, myself included. While paying higher taxes may not be ideal, it's a necessary step toward a better future. We need to prioritize funding for our roads, our bridges, our tunnels, and staffing to ensure our infrastructure meets our community's demands. Innovative programs are crucial for preparing us for tomorrow, and we must provide affordable, reliable housing for everyone, along with green spaces, clean drinking water, and we need good air quality. Our elderly, children, and new immigrant neighbors require our support to thrive. I'm proud to have been one of the co-chairs of the Transition Committee for our county executive, and I'm eager to start working on all of the recommendations that we gave. By contributing a little more now, we can gain so much more in return, and it's time to take bold steps to ensure our county truly serves everyone, and together we can build a future that reflects our values and aspirations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Reese Faran, and I am a resident of North Fayette, right off the Montour Trail. I'm a renter and one of over 400,000 renters here in Allegheny County. I urge the county council to pass the budget proposed by our county executive, Sarah Intermerato. County Council and President Katana, being a resident of your district, I urge all of you to deeply consider with care the proposed budget that invests in our county and will put the county on track to build an Allegheny for all, as many have said tonight, without mass layoffs or cuts in services for residents. At a time when raising costs, rising costs are shaking the foundation of our housing stability, and we all know rising rents has caused many people to move all around the county from neighborhood to neighborhood to seek out cheaper rents, and some leaving the county to do so as well. Many working-class families work multiple jobs to make ends meet. Working families, I would like to reiterate, are the backbone of our economy and society and deserve critical investments toward their welfare. County executives, Intermerato's budget proposal invests substantially in affordable housing, home repair eviction and eviction prevention, and rates stabilization to keep our families and neighbors in their homes and support first-time home buyers. I moved from Westchester, New York to study at Duquesne University, and I've chosen to build my life here. I can affirm that I've grown here, and I plan to stay here forever to make Allegheny County my home. I want my home to be a healthy and thriving community for everyone in the county. I don't want to leave, and I'll always fight financially to stay. So once again, I would like to reiterate my full support of the budget as we can build an Allegheny County for all. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Cameron Thompson. I've been a resident of Allegheny County for the last 14 years. I'm sure you've heard my story from my wife and my son. But as a renter of the county, I'm in support of the budget. I'm gratefully appreciative of what this county does for the people. I hope that it continues. I hope that it is, that depth is added to the budget as well as we continue to move forward. I have a lot of pride in Pittsburgh, even as a Ravens fan. But every day, I work with my clients at the Allegheny Financial Empowerment Center, and I can see it on their faces that they are moments away from losing their place, losing their entire setup of what they've built, just from accidents, from incidents, from daily happenings, trying to pick up their child, trying to navigate our bus system to get to work, and being fired for not making it to their jobs. So again, I'm in support. I don't have many statistics to say because they've been said today, and I don't want to drum it into your heads, but thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Has anybody signed up that did not get the opportunity to speak? I thought, considering there was somebody signed up. We only have one person.
Well, I signed up for something. Not sure what I signed up for, though, so.
Just please state your name.
Yes, I'm John Hanahan. I live in District 13 on the north side of Pittsburgh, and I'm here to voice my support for the budget as proposed by the county executive. So what happens when you don't have a reassessment for over a decade, and you don't raise the milage rate for over a decade, and you have a county where people, more than other counties, tend to age in place? You see tens of thousands of homeowners who have essentially seen a tax decrease over the past 12 years, right? They're paying the same dollar amount, 200, 300, 400, but their social security incomes have seen the cost of living increases, or if they're working with a union, they have cost of living increases, or if they just have a non-union job, chances are in the past decade, they've had some sort of raise. So unless you have the worst job in the world, and you haven't had a raise in 10 years, and you own a home, and you've been in that home, you've seen a tax decrease. You're paying the same dollar amount, but adjusted for inflation, that dollar amount is less and less a chunk of your paycheck. And I'm not usually a fan of the whole business as a government and government as a business metaphor. I think it's pretty tricky, but in this one case, I do think it applies because if you're selling a product, and that product costs a little bit more every year to produce, and you're selling it for the same amount after 10, 12 years, you're either Costco selling hot dogs, or you're a fool. This budget is not foolish. This budget is fiscally responsible. It makes up for the past decade of foolishness by raising the milage rates to an appropriate place. Now, I think part of the problem also is the lack of reassessment, separate issue. I think we all want to resolve that, but we're not going to get that done in the next couple of months. But for now, this budget is the first fiscally responsible step to make up for the past decade.
Thank you. Can I please have Director Cox and John Fournay, the county manager, come up for the presentation?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I want to start by thanking you for inviting us here and giving us a forum to speak about the county executive's budget. And I also want to thank the council for your engagement on this budget so far. We've had some good conversations. This is the first time in many, many years that the executive's office has briefed the council in advance of it being released publicly. We thought that was an important step to take, and we appreciate the fact that I think we got every member of council. And so we're thankful for that engagement and thankful that we were able to have those conversations about a week before the budget became public. Subsequent to those meetings, either Grant Gitlin or myself have been able to have conversations with many members of the council. And I was glad to host council leadership about a week and a half ago in the county manager's office, President Katina, Vice President Palmieri, Council Member Paul Messina. I thought that was a good conversation. I appreciate that you came and spoke with us about the budget. Moving forward, I think one of the takeaways we had from that meeting was to have subsequent meetings with council leadership to go more in-depth on the budget proposal. That meeting's coming together for next week. We needed a little bit of time to react to the conversation we had and be able to put together our presentation and give you numbers based on the conversations that we had. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. And over the next couple of days, my office will be reaching out to each council member as well to set up formal meetings with each of you to talk about the budget proposal. So that's a lot of engagement for the council, and I just want to say thank you for being available and for sitting with us to have those conversations. Now, tonight, I'm joined by Director Cox, his team. He and his team have done quite a bit of work on this proposal. We're going to walk through the county executive's budget proposal with you. Director Cox will lead that presentation. But there are a few numbers I want to touch on that will be relevant to the presentation right up front. The proposed tax increase is only a 4.5% increase for the median taxpayer over their combined tax bill. And I think that is important to note. It's about $15 a month, as has been noted. It's less if you have a house that is valued lower than the median. It's more if you're a wealthier homeowner. There is some justice to that, but it's about $15 a month. With no action to increase revenue, which I respect and appreciate is not the position of many members of council, but as an academic exercise, with no action, the county's projected deficit next year will be $148 million. That, of course, is only a theoretical number. We don't have enough money in cash reserve to cover that deficit, so effectively, the county would be financially insolvent. With a 1 mil increase, we would have to reduce the county executive's budget proposal by about $95 million. But cutting the budget to reach that number will also require cuts that will cost us funding match. And I want to spend some time talking about that concept because it is not as simple as saying we will increase revenue by 1 mil and we can take care of the remainder for dollar-for-dollar matches. For instance, in the Department of Human Services, we receive an 80% match on every dollar that we spend. For every dollar, we get $4 back to provide services. And so if you take $95 million, that reduction in the county executive's proposal, the reduction in property tax revenues, and you simply distribute that across county departments and assign the cost equally by proportion, right? If you're 10% of our operating budget, you're responsible for closing 10% of that $95 million. If you're 5% of the operating budget, you're responsible for closing 5% of that. We will necessarily have to make cuts to agencies that receive match or that receive Medicare reimbursement. That's Department of Human Services, the Health Department, Cane Centers, some other smaller programs that receive revenue. We will necessarily have to make cuts that will cost us a significant amount of revenue, such that the county budget would have to be reduced by $250 million. That is with a 1 mil property increase. That is a 21% reduction in the county budget. That level of budget cutting, simply put, would be catastrophic for this organization. Every single program that members of the public showed up to speak in favor of tonight would be considered for deep cuts, if not complete elimination, under that budget proposal. You might be tempted to say, well, why don't we try to shelter the departments that receive the match? The problem is, the departments that receive the match are among our largest departments. And so the reduction in revenue for DHS, just from our property tax contribution, would be about $27 million. If we shielded DHS from that $27 million and said, we are going to protect those services as much as possible, we would have to make up those cuts elsewhere in the budget. Doing so, just as an example, if we cut, flatlined, zeroed out, the county solicitor, sorry, Tim, but the Department of Budget and Finance, Human Resources, Equity and Inclusion, the Department of Court Records, the Department of Children's Initiatives, zeroed out every single one of those departments, we would still be millions of dollars short of closing that $27 million gap. We could, conversely, completely eliminate the Department of Public Works. That would get us very close. The problem is, the departments that receive the match are among our largest departments. And so the reduction in revenue for DHS, just from our property tax contribution, would be about $27 million. If we shielded DHS from that $27 million and said, we are going to protect those services as much as possible, we would have to make up those cuts elsewhere in the budget. Doing so, just as an example, if we cut, flatlined, zeroed out, the county solicitor, sorry, Tim, but the Department of Budget and Finance, Human Resources, Equity and Inclusion, the Department of Court Records, the Department of Children's Initiatives, zeroed out every single one of those departments, we would still be millions of dollars short of closing that $27 million gap. We could, conversely, completely eliminate the Department of Public Works. That would get us very close. We could completely eliminate the Department of Parks, completely eliminate to zero. That would get us close, but it still wouldn't cover that gap that we would need to cover to protect DHS. And that does not even get us close to talking about how we would protect the Cane Centers or protect the Department of Health. And so I want to illustrate the point that at a 1 mil increase, it is practically impossible to protect our county departments from catastrophic cuts, catastrophic cuts. I just want to explain that to you because the position of the county executive remains, and I think you'll see through Director Cox's presentation, the position of the county executive remains that we need 2.2 mils to keep the county operating. However, we cannot really even begin to negotiate a budget proposal that is limited at a 1 mil increase. We need to find a way to bring this discussion to some point of reality. And so it is important for the council to understand that. I know that there will be questions tonight, some of which we will be able to answer at the table, some of which we will not. And my commitment to the council is, we will provide those answers back to you in a memo before the close of business on Friday, two days from now, so that you can digest those answers and have some time to understand them. As I also said, I'll be reaching out individually. My office will be reaching out individually to county council members to discuss the budget proposal with you. And we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with county leadership. I hope you'll all be able to make it next week so we can go more in-depth on these numbers. And we can also provide a memo that summarizes what I just described for you in writing so you can have that in front of you and kind of digest those numbers at your convenience moving forward. So with that being said, I want to turn it over to Director Cox, who will be walking us through in greater detail the county executive's budget proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, county manager. Thank you, members of council. Truly, it's an honor being here today, speaking to the budget. And I want to thank county executive Enamorado and thank my budget staff behind us. We're a small team, but a mighty team, and truthfully, I would fail without their support and their hard work. So I just want to say thank you. It's been a difficult few weeks, so I really do appreciate that. This is an honest budget, one we believe to be fiscally responsible, and one that puts us on a strong financial foundation for the next few years. Many of you have seen this presentation on October 2nd, but we thought it's important to go through it with you again, so we'll jump right in. If you turn to page three, we'll start there. So what you see on this page is a look at our audited financials from 2022, 2023, a forecast for 2024, and a look at the 2025 budget that we ultimately presented. Why this is important is to show you the structural deficit that we have been facing the past few years. This county received $212 million of CARES funding and $380 million of ARPA funding. We have been using that to balance our operations since COVID hit this county. If you look at the bottom of page three, you could see that we've been in a surplus position since we started to receive this funding. We have used $15 million of ARPA in '22, $37 million of ARPA to support operations in 2023, and we're planning to use a combination of $48 million of American Rescue Plan along with $33 million of our fund balance to balance operations in 2024. I remind you that we did present and pass the budget that had $60 million of one-time revenues in 2024. That was a combination of $33 million worth of fund balance and $27 million worth of ARP. That deficit has grown from $60 million to $80 million for a few reasons. One of them being is our agency nurse costs that came in the jail that has simply ballooned more than what we expected in healthcare. Healthcare is up about $8 million when comparing 2023 to 2024. Those two costs of loan have pushed that up, along with the increased tax refunds we've seen as a result of the common level ratio. Every time we pick up the paper, you see one of the large commercial properties appealing their total assessed value downtown, which results in a lower tax base for us and additional tax refunds. Those three things have really led that deficit to grow from $60 million to $80 million. So without the ARPA money and without the fund balance, we would be operating at a significant loss this year. As we look to 2025, we're in a $148 million budget deficit. Thankfully, we have $14 million worth of fund balance in our drink tax and our debt service fund to help offset some of that, which puts us to a net $133 million deficit position. We proposed a 2.2 milage rate increase, which we will believe will generate approximately $167 million, including the increase to home set exemption at a 95% collection rate. So what that does, the 166 balances the operating deficit and replenishes the reserves that we're planning to use this year. Why reserves are important? For one, it's our credit rating. The better credit rating we have enables, or rather decreases, the cost of borrowing. Every year, we fund our capital budgets with bonds. So the better credit rating we have leads to a lower cost of borrowing. Also, it's like having a savings account at your home. You need to be able to plan for emergencies. As we turn to page four, many of you have seen this chart before. It's something we're really proud of in the budget office and something, quite honestly, this county as a team, including council, has helped us get to this position. We've been able to grow our fund balance to over $101 million. Many factors helped us get there: strong economy, converting our health insurance from a fully insured model to a self-insured model, strong management team, and an increasing tax base for our real estate revenue. But if I point your eyes to the 2024 chart, you could see that we're planning to use $33 million. If we did nothing, we would have zero reserves left in 2025. Again, our rating agencies, Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's, they recommend that, as a county of our size, that we have a minimum of 5% to 10% of available unassigned fund balance. We're at the bottom tier of that as it currently stands right now. Our unassigned fund balance is approximately $56 million. That will be intact at the end of this year, but if we did nothing, that will be depleted. And as the county manager said, we will essentially be insolvent. As we look forward, the county manager spoke to this, but on page five, you could see that the 2.2 milage increase that we proposed is an effective 4.5% increase of the total tax bill. That total tax bill includes your school district milage, your borough milage, and the county milage. Again, the overall increase effectively is a 4.5% increase overall. On page six, it illustrates it via pie chart. You could see that the proposed increase, the 2.2 mils, is a 4.5% increase on the overall tax bill, which includes your borough tax, your school tax, and your county tax. It's a small portion. Flipping forward to the revenue on page eight, this is a pie chart of all of our different revenue sources at the county. As you can see, taxes make up approximately 58% of our revenue. That's really the only tool we have in our toolbox to help balance the equation. That tax is real estate tax, sales tax, and drink tax. If you look on the left, you would see that state and federal make up about 22%. That is essentially formula-based funding at our canes and jails, so we do not have the ability to just increase that revenue. Department earnings, charges, that revenue is flat. Those are our fines from our courts, Health Department fees. Again, that's not helping balance this budget at all. And then the other source, that 3%, it's interest earnings we have on cash in our bank account. Again, it's a small portion. Our taxes represent 58% of our total revenue, and that's really the only tool we have in our toolbox to help get us out of this deficit. We are not going to cut our way out of a $100 million deficit at this time. This is a chart you've seen before, and I think we showed it to you on October 2nd. Page nine, this is a view of our total assessed value. Again, this region has been very fortunate over the past 10 years to see our total real estate value grow by approximately $1 billion to $1.5 billion per year. That generates anywhere from $5 to $10 million in additional tax revenue in those years. If you look to 2025 for the first time, and again, over a decade, we're forecasting total assessed value to decrease. This is purely a result of all the tax appeals we've seen due to the common level ratio lawsuit from 2022. Again, this is commercial residential properties appealing their house value, which has led to a reduction in our total assessed value. This is lower tax revenue, which is helping, or it's contributing to the lost position that we're in right now. On page 10, I spoke to this a little bit when we met at the beginning of October, but I sort of wanted to put statistics to what we spoke to. So the chart at the top of page 10 shows a history of all the tax appeals that have gone through BPAR and the Board of Viewers. If you point your eyes to the gray column, you could see there's been over a $1.8 billion reduction in total assessed value that has gone through BPAR, and a $1.2 billion reduction in total assessed value that has gone through the Board of Viewers since 2022. Again, that's a $3 billion total reduction in our total assessed value at this county. That's $15 million annually, and if you compound that, that's over $30 million that we have lost as a county due to the CLR lawsuit. I wish I could say the future looked bright, but if you look at the chart at the bottom, this is what is currently appealed for 2025. Something that we were supportive of was legislation that county council passed this year to move the appeal window from March 31st of the current year to October 1st of the preceding year. I think this will lead to better budgeting, not only for the county, but also for our municipalities as we look forward. This puts us on the appeal-certify-bill approach versus certify-bill-appeal. So again, thank you for doing that. I do think it'll put us in the county, again, give us better budgeting. But if I point your eyes to the bottom right number on this, you could see that there's $2.7 billion that is appealed for 2025. We need to hear these cases by the end of the year, and there will be results which will, again, further reduce the total assessed value. The number that's really important on this chart is the $2.4 million of owner-occupied appeals. Those are the people that are going after the common level ratio. There will be further reductions in those values for both commercial and residential properties. So when we show you the forecast of the total assessed value dipping below $84 billion, it's an honest forecast. I honestly think it's a little bit conservative as we see these numbers. On page 11, this is a chart you've seen before. Average assessed, or average median value of a home, a residential home in this county is $110,400. Again, the 2.2 milage increase equates to a $15 increase for those homeowners. I think there's been a lot that has gone on since we proposed this budget, a lot of confusion around assessed value and sales price. We understand that most homes in this county are selling for north of $200,000 right now, some north of $300,000. But we pulled statistics from our Office of Property Assessment and found that, on average, the median assessment is 31% to 66% of the total sales price. On page 12, this is something I think we're all aware of in this room and something that many of the speakers spoke to tonight, but we have not increased taxes in over a decade. When you apply a 3% increase to that milage rate every single year since the last we raised taxes, you could see that it puts us at 6.95. We proposed a 6.93 increase. Again, if you apply a 3% inflation adjustment to the milage rate from 2012 until now, it puts us at exactly what we presented to county council on October 8th. The next few slides walk us through our large sources of revenue at this county, the first of which being our real estate tax revenue. In 2023, we collected almost $387 million in real estate revenue. In 2024, we had a budget of approximately $393 million. You could see that our projection for 2024 is about $10 million shy of that, and again, that's due to the tax refunds. As you flip to page four, this is actually a new chart that we added in. This is the real estate tax refunds. For many years there, we were having around $3 to $4 to $5 million a year. Common level ratio hits this county in 2022, and you see that spike to $10.5 million. And this year, we're actually projecting close to $15 million, which, again, I know there was a lot of conversation on the controller saying that we're losing $60 million, the budget office saying that we're losing $81 million. This refund is paying a large part into that. Sales tax revenue on page 15. As many of you know, the county imposes a 1% sales tax on top of the state's 6%. Of that 1%, we actually get to keep a quarter of it. The other quarter goes to the municipalities, and then 50% goes to RAD. Again, so we keep a quarter of the 1% sales tax in this county. In 2023, we collected almost $67 million. In 2024, we're projecting $63.4 million. The large decrease there, in '23, there was a business that was not remitting the correct tax to the state, so that is somewhat of a blip. It's not like sales are declining significantly, but again, I wanted to highlight this to you to show you that the sales tax revenue is not going to balance the budget. We're lucky to see 1% to 2% growth in sales tax revenue every single year. As we look to page 16, this is our transit support revenue. We generate 7% on all poured beverages at this county. This is a restricted fund. This money goes to support our port authority, specifically for their operating and capital budgets. We have a 15% match requirement on these funds. Again, revenues have been primarily flat, and this is a restricted use. One positive here is that our transit fund does have almost $42 million in reserves. I guess this county likes to drink. Taylor Swift last year certainly helped it, but again, this money cannot balance our operations. It's a restricted use. It has to go to support regional transit in this region, primarily 15% match on our port authority operating and capital budgets. On page 17, this is our 2% revenue from the Rivers Casino. We get 2% from, it is gross terminal revenue, which is our slot machines. We are not receiving revenue from sports gambling. We're not receiving revenue from the table games. That goes directly to the state. This revenue has been flat since I've been working in the budget office. You could see that it hovers around $5.3 million a year. Again, we cannot balance the deficit with this. On page 18, you could see that we have seen an increase in our state and federal revenue, but again, this is formula-based. As our Department of Human Service, CANE, Health Department have grown over the years, we do leverage state dollars which have supported those departments. On page nine, you'll see a list of all of our departments. I wanted to walk you through the large changes in revenue for each one of those, starting with Department 20, which is Administrative Services. You see that we're reducing revenue by almost $3.7 million. This is a direct result of interest rates rising. As interest rates rise, mortgage rates, vehicle rates rise. It has led to less real estate transactions, less homes being purchased, less refinancings, which has led to a drop in revenue. In children's initiatives, we're seeing a $2 million increase. As you recall, we are funding the Allegheny County Child Care Matters Program, which supports early learning education, out-of-school time learning, and childcare support. That money will help leverage additional state dollars. There's a 60% match on that, so we will be able to leverage state dollars to support that program, and that's what the $2 million is for. Human Service, we'll jump into at a later slide. CANE's up almost $11 million. This is a product of rate increases from the state budget, and it's sad to say, but there's been many nursing homes in this region that have closed recently, so our canes actually have received increased census. Of course, when you have additional residents, you do see the variable costs on the other side of the equation go up. You have to have increased nurses, increased pharmaceutical costs. But again, we do get the medical assistance from the state, which is primarily the reason for the $11.5 million increase. The jail is going down by approximately $4 million. That's a product of two things. We don't have the federal inmates in our jail, so that is a loss of revenue there. And then, if you recall, last year, council changed where the commission revenue would go. That money was diverted from the operating budget into the incarcerated individuals' welfare fund, so that was a $2 million loss for our operating budget. As we continue down, you see the large increase in our non-departmental revenue line item, about $113 million. I mentioned this earlier, but a 2.2 milage increase with a $3,000 increase to our home set exemption at 95% will generate $167 million in tax revenue. Why that's not 167 there is because you have to take out the use of fund balance from last year. last year. Moving forward to our expenditures, you could see on page 21 that public safety and health and welfare represent over 65% of our operating budget. Any cuts we make to this budget would be catastrophic to those two program areas. Moving forward to page 22, I'll walk you through the departmental summary on the expenditure side of the equation, starting with the county manager. It's up 30%, but that's due to three different positions that we're funding in that department. We have added a grants manager, which we're very excited about. It's going to help us leverage additional state and federal dollars. We're adding a press secretary, which is needed, and an assistant deputy county manager. The solicitors department is up almost $700,000. That's a result of the union contract that we have at our Public Defender and District Attorney offices. If you recall, a few years ago, there was a collective bargaining settlement that increased the starting wages to $65,000. I think it's closer to $66,000 now. Our solicitors, who are, of course, management employees, did not receive the raise at that time, but we have brought them up to market rate, which is driving that increase in that department. The Public Defender's Office, which we spoke to tonight, is receiving additional positions and increase and additional money for their services specifically related to capital trials. There's been more capital cases in this county recently, which, as you can imagine, are very expensive. Human Resources is up almost 10%. That is a result of the compensation study that the executive announced as part of our hiring plan, so that's something we're very excited about. Employees are our biggest asset, and we need to make sure we're investing in that. IT, Department of Information Technology, is up almost $4.5 million. That is us moving money from the capital budget into the operating budget. For many, many years, we were funding software license out of our capital budget. That is not appropriate financing. There is not a useful life on software licenses. We should not be issuing debt, paying 25 years of interest on a one-year software license. So that is us correcting the budget, moving those annual software licenses back into the Department of Information Technology. Again, DCI is up, well, Children's Initiatives is up almost $5 million. That is us funding the Allegheny County Child Care Matters Program that supports early learning education, childcare support, and out-of-school learning. Again, very important services for our departments, or I'm sorry, our most vulnerable residents. We'll get into human services on a further slide. CANE and the jail are both really up due to healthcare increases and agency nurse costs. Emergency Services is up due to IT and maintenance costs that we must maintain in order to run our 911 center. Sustainability is up almost 64%, primarily due to the Climate Action Plan. As we move forward to slide or page 23, this is a look at our Human Services Department. We use almost $58 million to leverage approximately $220 million in state and federal funding. As the county manager said, for every $1, DHS leverages $4 of state match. In other words, we reimburse at an 80% rate for all children, youth, and family activities. In previous budgets, we left approximately $40 million of state funding on the table. Any cuts to that would hinder services for our adoption, violence prevention, out-of-school time learning, housing support, kinship care, foster care, mental health services, and substance use treatment for our families. On page 24, we show you a look at our full-time operating employees. Again, before COVID, we were operating with approximately 5,500 employees. When you look down to 2022, unfortunately, we lost almost 560 employees over that time for various reasons. Retirements, work from home, many different things led to that. I'm happy to report in '23 and '24, we have been able to hire more. That's in part due to some wage increases and other initiatives that we put into place. Flipping forward to page 26 is a look at our debt portfolio. As you may recall, our last bond deal was this summer when we secured over $160 million of principal proceeds to fund our 2024 and 2025 capital budgets. In addition to the new money, we were successfully able to refinance over $60 million of old principal monies to save approximately $5.5 million of present value savings, which has helped this budget. We were very proud of the deal. Honestly, it was a great deal. We had a great team in place, and I really appreciate council support over the summer to make sure we stayed on time and got everything accomplished that we needed to. Most importantly, though, when you issue bonds, you have to request a rating from either Standard and Poor's and Moody's, and our ratings were reaffirmed at AA- and AA3. Both of the rating reports did speak to things that could potentially lead to a rating decrease. Both agencies spoke to a material draw on reserves and us not being able to improve our pension fund. So either of those two things could lead to a potential rating decrease as we look into the future. On page 26, this chart shows you our debt service by year. The rating agencies like to see this debt structure. This is predictable, and it really leads to responsible budgeting. When we issue new debt, we work with our underwriters and the financial advisor to ensure we maintain this structure and prevent spiking. This is all about predictability, and again, we really appreciate council support helping us with the bond deal this summer. Looking forward to page 29 gives you a view of our capital budgets. We're very proud to present a robust capital budget at this time. This budget continues our commitment to pave 40 miles of road and fix the structurally deficient bridges in this county. We're continuing to invest in our buildings at CANE, the jail, the courthouse, and we are budgeting to receive Inflation Reduction Act credits for the first time from our Department of Sustainability. The budget reflects continued support for our nine-county parks. Recently, we had ribbon cuttings at Settler's Cabin and Boys Park that were huge successes, so we need to continue that investment in our parks. Public safety remains a top priority for us, and we're continuing to invest in the Motorola project, which improves the critical infrastructure at our 911 facility and is funding public safety radios for all of our first responders at this county. As you could see, the bond proceeds represent approximately 69% of the capital budget. Tax revenue pays the annual debt service on our bond proceeds. Without sufficient tax revenue, we would see cuts to our capital budget in the future. One thing you've heard the county executive speak to is on page 30. For the first time in many, many years, we're making significant investments in our Department of Economic Development. The 2025 budget proposes a new capital investment of almost $20 million. This enables ACED to leverage additional state and federal dollars. This money is going to go towards housing stabilization, a comprehensive action plan, business development, Main Street revitalization, blight removal, and infrastructure improvement for many of our municipalities. Again, it's something we're very proud of. Something else we're very proud of was the governor's announcement to invest $600 million in this county, and I don't think that would have been done without our county executive's support last week on the downtown revitalization plan. That's going to be very important for our county as we look forward into the future. We don't have to spend too much time on the next few slides, but I'm looking at page 32 right now. This shows you that our tax revenue, the $687 million in tax revenue we receive at this county, helps us leverage over $1.6 billion in grant revenues. Our grant budget is very robust, and that tax revenue helps leverage those state and federal dollars. Looking to page 33, you could see that our county match on those grant funds is very low. It's less than 1% on a $1.6 billion budget, and that's something we're very proud of. I'll jump forward to page 25. You could see that we have a $168 million special revenue budget. Special revenues are fee-based. They continue in perpetuity, and they have a very restricted use. With that, I'll finish it, open up for questions, and thank you again, members of council.
Thank you, county manager. Director Cox, appreciate you and all your team's work. What a great time to get promoted to be the director, huh?
I'm honored.
Wow. A little bit of doom and gloom. I'm going to start to my right here, but before I start to the right, I just want to make a comment. We're all here to work with you, and we're going to do the best we can, but a couple of the speakers, I think, tonight said it right. You know, from 2012 to 2020, there was never no tax increase there. We were always told that things are good. There was no doom and gloom that I ever saw. When we asked those questions, we were never even presented a budget like this, so I kind of think this fell in your lap. Who's to blame? I don't know. Oh, I know who's to blame, but that was great what you did there, and I know we got a lot of questions for you, and I appreciate all the time you and your team put in for us, I really do. But once again, this kind of fell into your lap. So I'm going to go to my right and start with Jack, who's laughing at me already. Yeah, Jack?
Actually, you took my question. That's, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Okay, I just have a few questions, and then, please excuse me, I have to leave and go to school. So my first question is, we've been hearing a lot of people say that we need to find the waste in the budget, that there's just so much waste that can be cut. And so I'm wondering if you could please point out where that waste is that could easily be cut from this budget? I think you presented on it earlier that there wasn't, but if you could just give a succinct answer about that.
Well, I will give you, try to give you a complete answer to the question.
Thank you.
Over the last several fiscal years, there has been a lot of cutting in the budget. You know, the prior administration really prided itself on being very close with the purse, and I think that we could agree that they were. You know, I want to just direct you to page 24 in our presentation here, again, which talks about headcount. This is the reduction in headcount in the county since 2019. It's been a 10% reduction already, so I don't want members of the public to think, well, we got all this ARPA money and all this federal aid and just went hog wild for the last three or four years with our budget. Making the budget work over those last couple of years required a lot of cutting in addition to the federal aid that the county received. That's what got the county the extra couple of years out of that money, right? So there's been a significant amount of cutting. It is also true that managing a budget of this size is a garden that needs constant tending. We are all, there is, we have a very talented budget director, a very talented budget staff back here. There are directors and fiscal administrators in each county department who are constantly squeezing money out of their operations to meet the immense demand that there is in Allegheny County for more services and for more efficient services. So nobody is sitting on vast sums of money or vast sums of waste in this county. We are constantly looking for it. We are constantly looking for those weeds to be pulled out of the garden, okay? That is not to say that there may not be small pockets here and there. Weeds constantly crop up in a garden, but we have a talented and dedicated staff looking for them all the time. You know, I've heard a lot of talk about going through the budget line by line. We're very happy to do that. We do that as a matter of course on a daily basis. But going through a budget line by line and finding, you know, the random department that's paying too much for staples or shaving travel budgets or professional membership budgets, which I will defend as extremely important for staff development and for making sure that our staff are exposed to cutting-edge policies and programs and bringing the best back to Allegheny County. But going through the budget and doing that exercise is helpful if you have a deficit that is, say, 1%, 2%. It will be completely inadequate to address the size of the fiscal problem that we have right now with Allegheny County.
That was a very complete answer.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. My next question is, you alluded to in the presentation how, you know, a higher millage rate increase maybe would have put us in a better situation, but that you made cuts so that you only had to propose a 2.2-mill increase. So I guess my question is, you know, what are some things that if you proposed a higher millage rate increase, we could have gotten? Like, what are priorities that were cut so that we could propose the most conservative millage increase?
Well, every department, every year in the budgeting process, department directors bring forward a list of proposals, and we choose among them, right? So there are a lot of proposals that came forward from our departments for improvements in services that we did not recommend. Rather than go through those, I will point out a couple of things in the budget. The Allegheny Child Care Matters Program, we are really only proposing to fund that for six months in fiscal year '25. That does not carry forward to future fiscal years, right? The Emergency Rental Assistance Program is another example. That is one that we are really only proposing to fund in 2025. We're not proposing to carry that forward after 2026. Those might be programs that we would look to extend if we had more resources. You know, this is not the most romantic way to spend county resources, but we have very serious needs in our fund balance and in our pension fund that need to be addressed. As Director Cox pointed out, those two issues are the largest factors holding back our rating for bond ratings. And, you know, not to put too fine of a point on it, but the better your bond rating is, the lower your coupon rate is on bonds, and the more roads and bridges and park facilities you can repair or build on an annual basis, which is why it is so incredibly important for us to protect our fund balance, right? The list of programs we could explore is immense. The demand on the county for services is immense, whether that be rental assistance or housing stabilization or homelessness or, you know, maternal and child health or any of the important services that we undertake. We are simply, even with a 2.2-mill increase, unable to meet the immense demand in this county for those services. So I guess my answer to that, Councilmember Halem, is take your pick.
Yeah. I had a feeling of that, so thank you for explaining that. And then, my last question, I would have more, but the chairman only allows me three in this setting. So my last question is, we've heard over the past few budget hearings some alluding to, you know, this tax increase was proposed in secret, and there was no austerity measures that were taken prior to introducing a 2.2-mill tax increase. And so I was just wondering if, for the record, for everyone's information, if you guys could talk about, you know, since the new administration took over in January of this year until the time, which was a couple days before you presented to the public, to the time council and, I guess, the departments were made aware of the proposed tax increase? If you could just talk about all the steps that you took to figure out how much we would need to raise taxes, how much departments could get funded, just kind of explain that for everyone.
Well, certainly. You know, I think that in the analysis that the administration did leading up to this budget, it became very clear to us early on that a austerity budget was simply infeasible. And once you cross the threshold of understanding that there would have to be a property tax increase, one asks the question, do you want to increase taxes and lay people off? Do you want to increase taxes and zero out county departments? Or do you want to bring an honest budget forward that does what we can to maintain and in some marginal ways, limited marginal ways, improve county services? Or do you want to take on both challenges on both sides? The decision that the county executive made was, these services are too critically important to our community, and given the math that we knew to be true, that this is for the median homeowner, a $15 a month increase, the benefits to the public, the benefits to county residents, for all of the important services that we would be protecting, far outweighed the costs. That is what led us to the budget proposal that was made to the council. Are we going to protect the services, or are we not going to protect the services? We decided to. We decided to protect the services.
This isn't a fourth question. This is just a follow-up to the third question. But more so like, what does that look like? Like, the Budget Office and, you know, the execs office sit down and go through each department, go through each line item? I'm just trying to paint a picture of what it looks like that you do from beginning of coming into office to introducing a proposed budget for the next year.
Well, I think it really starts with the talented work of our budget office. They are constantly monitoring the forecasts of expenditures and revenues. That is, of course, aided by, you know, the county treasurer, by the controller. They provide us with data. I wouldn't say that they're in the room for the budget decision-making, but the data that comes in is important. And in that, we create a projection for where we may be. Now, we are required by ordinance, of course, to propose a budget that is for the current fiscal year and two years out, so we're always looking at that window. We have had a structural deficit in the county for many years. It has been discussed, I think openly with council, with the public. You know, the prior county executive was very clear in their last budget proposal about what trajectory the county was headed in, although I think the numbers weren't very specific because they weren't known at that time, right? But, you know, as Director Cox discussed, some of the cost drivers that are driving the financial reality we have, as those became apparent to us throughout the summer, I think that that created this matrix and this framework. The Budget Office, you know, I'm not joking, I think I've spent more time with Director Cox than any other city employee since I started, which has been wonderful, great guy. But the county manager and the county manager's office is very deeply involved. I am, I meet regularly with the county executive, with the chief of staff to the county executive and their staff. And so there's a lot of exchange of information there. But the meat of the budget proposal, really by necessity, is put on the bone leading up to the proposal to council. You know, when you're halfway through the fiscal year, you have an idea of where you're going, but it's not really till you get into the third quarter you can say, all right, this is where we're at, and this is what we need moving forward.
That's exactly what I was wondering. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick?
Well, thanks for the doom and gloom speech. We know it's a fact, and your presentation is factual, and I appreciate the honesty of what this administration is doing. I've made the comments prior to this meeting about, so what are we going to do as council members? The question is, I didn't want to tax our way into the next five years. I was hoping that we could fully fund the county in the year 2025 and find out what 2026 would bring. This is what I personally thought, not council members, but I don't think we can get to a 2.2 mil increase with 10 members of our council. I'm being honest here. I don't know what the line is right now, where it's going to be or where it could be, but I think it's going to be up to the administration to prove to this council that necessary things have to be done in order to move forward, and that's difficult. Everybody has a different district, an opinion, a thought on what we should or should not keep or cut. I've had thoughts. I'll keep them to myself at this point because I don't think it's relevant. Well, it is. I just don't want to say it publicly. But the bottom line is, this is probably the most difficult decision council members have made in the last 12 years. There's no doubt about it, and as well as the administration. We knew we should have raised our taxes a few years back because COVID put us in a bind, but there's no way we could raise taxes during COVID. I mean, people were out of jobs. That would have been even more horrible than this year. And we know that all the buildings in the city of Pittsburgh have lost their value, and I knew it was going to reflect on us eventually because here we are. And the business owners have lost a lot of income and revenues, and it's falling on the backs of the homeowners, and we know that. But my biggest thought and question, I know you can't answer it, I'm pretty sure you can't. How did the city of Pittsburgh lose $156 million and not propose a tax increase this year? How the hell did they do that? That's a question I don't know. Maybe you can't answer it. I sure as heck can't answer it. But the question is, what did they possibly do to protect $156 million in losses? I just don't know what the answer to that is, and I don't know how we can do it because we're much bigger. You know, we have all these different programs, the hospitals, the law enforcement, 911. They have nothing to do with it. We do. I mean, there's just so much going on here. It's way beyond, I hate to use the word my pay grade, to run a budget of this magnitude. That's what your specialty is, and I respect you for that. So bottom line is, by December, we're going to have to make a decision, this council, and come up with a reasonable millage increase that we can all live with, the administration and council. And I'm going to leave that task up to you guys because I'm just one member here, and I'm willing to work with this administration the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Count Homan Filioggi.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chairman, I'm assuming. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. And I wasn't able to make the initial budget, or no, the second scheduled budget, and you guys canceled the first. I was available for that, but I was working for the second. So I wasn't able, and I haven't actually received any phone calls regarding the budget to reach out. Although I think I, in fact, I know I've given everyone my personal cell phone, so I will appreciate that call. But because I don't have been able to speak with anyone, I do have some specific questions. And one being, so, and Tim, you are the person who is in charge of the numbers here, but have you personally taken a deep dive into the contracted employees? Because you indicated to us today that that was unexpected. Those increases, drastic increases in the contracted employees, was unexpected. And to hear the county manager tell us that the departments are constantly monitoring, it sounds like you're all very busy monitoring, but yet we have a drastic increase in the contracted employees. How did we miss that, and what's the number?
So the Budget Office meets monthly with Cane and the JL to discuss the agency nurse staff. I could say right now that we are working with the purchasing department to put an RFP out to look into that, Councilwoman. When I say we miss it, I think we're always trying to hire full-time employees at a lower rate. We have a very difficult time doing that for our nurses just due to competitive wages. We've put hiring bonuses in place. We've tried to change schedules to accommodate that. Our nurses at Cane work five days a week, first nurses in the healthcare setting, many of whom work 312s, so that's a big challenge of ours. We strictly have not been able to hire. We budget that way. We try to fill the full-time positions at a lower rate, but we unfortunately have been unsuccessful. We have not turned away residents at our Canes. When nursing homes are closing in this community, we welcome with open arms. Unfortunately, to accept those residents, we need nurses, which has led us to additional agency staff. Again, though, we do meet monthly, and we are in having detailed discussions with directors for both departments to look into those costs.
And by your words, you used that those costs were ballooning and they were unexpected. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, Councilmember, it's a very challenging labor market. And county, we try to do our best to create attractive pay and benefit packages for employees. In some departments, that is successful at recruitment, and in some departments, it has not been. And so the realities of the labor market are catching up to us, and I think based on trend lines of previous years, we're exceeding trend line from previous years. The question of when that labor market was going to catch up with us is a difficult target to hit. It hit us this year. That's fundamentally the problem.
Yesterday, we heard a very good presentation from CCAC, who touts their robust nursing program. Has, and I asked them a question, is, do they have, have they partnered with the JL for their interns? And have they, and now, have you, has the administration tried to partner or have the robust program at CCAC partner with the JL and the Canes to provide some of that much-needed help? And if so, what have you done to incentivize those students at CCAC perhaps going into a public service job, either at the JL or at the Canes? Have you done anything like that?
So we will follow up with the council and provide all of the efforts that we've undertaken to try to bolster nurse recruiting. That's going to have to be, I know that we have undertaken efforts, and I don't want to misspeak. So we'll follow up and provide that in a follow-up memo to you.
And specifically with CCAC going to the JL and to the Canes, those nursing programs and internships, things like that?
Sure.
Okay? Thanks very much. Another question that I have is, if you're looking at page five, I'm sure that you could probably tell that, why that page gives me agita, at least in the top part, when you're looking at District Two. But by the same token, you're also looking at many other districts that are not at that 4.5%. And I believe if you could, if we were being honest, about $13, $18, that's not what's going to happen in District Two, in Three, in Four, in Five. That's, that isn't what's going to happen. We have to be honest with the public as well. And the example that you've cited on page five, on medium assessed home value, also assumes that there will be no increases in the school or municipal millage rates. And what is also, would be an honest statement, is that every taxing body is undergoing inflationary pressures. Every taxing body has been, has understood that their money from the federal government was going to cease. So that, I have had people call me and say, okay, it's 46%, but does that really mean 76%? Or whatever. These are people that are under, and rightly so, skeptical of the ability to manage the county, and we're included in that, as well as where other hits are going to come from. So we have other inflationary pressures from other taxing bodies, which would be the school district and the bureaus, I mean, the boroughs. And we also have, I have a letter here, I mean, anecdotally, Westview Water is, sent me a letter saying they're increasing my water consumption, the rate increase will be 4.1%. The PUC has allowed all of the utilities' great percentage rates increases. So this is on top, can we agree that these increases are on top of the 46% increase that we are proposing to give our property tax owners in Allegheny County? It's just a yes or no. It's on top of the 46%, correct?
Well, I think the correct answer is that what, any increases that may be coming from other municipalities is just a demonstration that every other government is experiencing the same pressures that Allegheny County is, and should really speak to the validity of the projections that we've put together. Now, whether that's impacting other governments is up to those other governments. Some governments, as it's been noted, the city of Pittsburgh, most notably, aren't proposing. Many governments will not be proposing. So the 4.5% increase that we're proposing is what we're responsible for.
But you can, got it. Okay, right. And council needs to also think of a picture that, as we're hearing from our constituents, that they realize all this stuff is coming. So to simply be able to sell the point that it's going to be $13, $18, they're not buying it.
That's what we're
They can do the math.
That's what we are responsible for.
Right.
And I will say to your point about the council districts, it is true that wealthier homeowners will pay more under this proposal.
Yes. Thank you for saying that. Okay, so we also have page 34, which I just don't know what this is about. It's the grant totals by department. And I was wondering, what is this grant money used for? For example, Department 24, which is children initiatives, they got grants, four grants totaling $9.8 million. But they need an additional $6.1 million from the taxpayers to operate. So what did the $9.8 million go to in the grants? And the page I'm referring to is in your summary, and that's 34. And then I would also ask the same of the sustainability department. They received $6 million in four grants. Economic Development received $155 million. Human Services received $1.2 billion, and these are all grants. And I'd just like some clarification as to where that money goes.
Councilwoman, we'll be happy to get you those details by the end of the week, as the county manager alluded to. We have all the details. We work with the departments when we develop the grant budgets, and specifically what programs those support, so I'd be happy to get that for you.
Oh.
Yeah, I told some of the electeds and some of the other people that presented the last couple of budget hearings that there's going to be a lot of questions thrown at them. So, you know, if there's some things that they need to get more information on, they can provide us a couple days later.
Sure. Okay, so if you could, that'd be great. The special accounts, page 37 of your presentation. I have special accounts, special accounts at home that I sock money away so that I know that I could pay for my trip to Tahiti that I was supposed to take when I was 55. That's long gone. So that just kind of rings to me. So I noticed that the Budget and Finance Committee has $28 million for special accounts, $15 million from the Health Department, Human Services has $7 million, Emergency Services 40, Economic Development 13. I just don't know what that's for. What do those special accounts represent? Or can you get that information to us?
So I'm more comfortable speaking of this versus all the grants that you named. The budget and finance money there is the opioid monies that this county is receiving. Emergency Services is to support the 911 operating center. Court of Common Pleas gets that money for our child support enforcement program. Health Department, that's your clean air monies, your Title V monies that come in from fees from polluters. So no, we're not socking money away. Again, special accounts are fee-driven, they continue in perpetuity, and they have a restricted use.
So the $15 million for the Health Department, which are fees for what you're saying is polluters, they are getting this in 2025, but they need additional monies?
So that's the estimated appropriation. So that's the appropriation we're giving to the Health Department. They have the ability to spend up to $15 million. That's not necessarily what they're generating. We budget our special accounts based on the cash available on the preceding year.
And then what does the budget and finance, 28 million?
That's the opioid settlement money that this county is receiving.
So it's there?
I, it's, Melissa could tell us exactly what's there, and I could get you all the details, but again, I think we're anticipating to receive, is it 26 million?
We get our payments every December, so this would be representing what comes in this December to spend. And at this time, we're estimated to get 26 million because of the second wave of settlements that include Walmart, and they're paying a large sum upfront. So there's estimates that we should be getting that money this December, so we had to budget it so that we would be, have the ability to start spending those dollars as soon as possible. This may not all be spent in the, there's timeframes within that opioid settlement as to when you have to spend it down as well. And it's different depending on which settlement it is. So that's just a representative, representative of what our expected balance would be if that money comes in in December.
Okay. And so could you provide us? And so, could you provide us at some point with?
100%.
Where it's going?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We actually have a public dashboard as well on the opioid settlement fund.
I mean, where you have. Just remind everybody that we're going to be meeting with the administration and the director next week, so if you can hold off on some of those questions, I mean, unless...
I didn't have an opportunity to speak like some of you guys did.
This is the most I've ever seen you talk.
Really?
Yeah.
My family would be surprised by that.
I'm just trying to speed things up, but if, you know...
You should sit down my end of the room, I could not get that many...
No, I mean, honestly, quite honestly, this is the first time we've spoken, right? And thank you for answering my questions. I do appreciate that. I look forward to the additional information that you're giving, that you will give. And I do have a lot more questions, so I'm waiting for that call. Thank you.
The call is coming. Outreach from my office tomorrow.
Thanks.
Okay, Nick.
Well, it's actually not a question, and I meant to say it when I had my turn. I'd just like to clarify something that I've been explaining to people since the last 16 years. In December of 2007, we voted for the drink tax, and it was blamed on the Port Authority, and you probably believe that, I'm assuming. Let's be honest, and let's tell the people the truth, it had nothing to do with the Port Authority. It had everything to do with the fund balance of this county. Okay, so, they basically blamed the Port Authority, because I had the township of Fawn Township, and most of us, a lot of us council members have outskirts. Well, they wanted to leave the county. They said, "We don't even have bus service, and you're going to charge us drink tax." So, just to clarify the fact that the drink tax was not based on Port Authority, they could have blamed the jail, they could have blamed the Sheriff's Department, the parks, blamed somebody, but they took the fall for that, and that wasn't really fair for them. So, I just want to clarify that this evening. So, from now on, we shouldn't discuss the drink tax as funding for the Port Authority. It's to fund the balance of our budgets, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you. I'm going to save all my questions until when we meet next week. Just a thought, and I know we keep saying that the number is absorbent, but I think if we can look to cut a little bit here and there, and I know it sounds like, you know, a million here, 500 here, but I think we can work with that. The one question I just had, I'm looking at, because of my past working across the street in the city, is for 2025, I think it's $4.3 million in seasonal work. And there was times, I believe, in the city of Pittsburgh when I worked, that we didn't get summer help. I'm just thinking, is there programs that I got that maybe we can possibly, I mean, the summer guys usually do that, you know, they cut the weeds, they pick the litter, and I understand all that, but I mean, maybe just for one year, we get ourselves a little bit of stable. If we can look to make smaller cuts to something like that, maybe we can, you know, kind of get that number down a little bit county-wide. Just a thought there, but I'll save these till we all meet. You know, there's no reason to prolong this meeting, but so...
Since I already have.
Since you had nine questions. President Katina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few questions. When was the first time that we realized how bad the budget, the deficit, actually was? When?
Well, if you go back to comments made by the prior county executive, I think either his last or second from last budget, I think he was pretty clear that there was a significant tax increase coming in our future. And so, it has not been a secret, is my understanding, among county stakeholders, inside or outside of the administration.
Okay. Because I think when we were, one of the questions that I specifically asked during our bond, when we were going out for the bond, I asked, are we basically good? Are we set? Do we have enough money based upon our current millage to basically make that payment? And I was told, yes, we do. What changed since then?
President Katina, so, the increase in debt service, I believe, year over year is $74 million to $81 million. We had $7 million tucked away in fund balance from prior refinancings. So, when we answered your question, yes, it was with that in mind, that we knew we had fund balance available in our debt service fund to pay that annual increase. Now, this tax increase does help cover our principal and interest payments as we look into the future, but that was the reason for that answer.
Okay, so, at that point in time, that we really knew how bad it was?
How bad the structural deficit was? Again, I would agree with the county manager that we passed a budget with $60 million of one-time revenues in it, so, yes, we had an idea of what was coming.
Okay. How did we, obviously, the refunds for the CLR and that calculation, that whole fiasco, and the county being accused of cooking the books, how did we miscalculate the projection by so much? I mean, $5 million, and it's now up to $15 million. I mean, the prior administration obviously had some experience with this, so we plugged in a deliberately low number, knowing that things weren't going to end up that way. That's a little bit of a problem, I think.
Well, I wouldn't characterize it in that way. We base these projections on the trend lines that we're experiencing. And so, you know, as appeals have continued, you know, and to an extent worsened, that has changed the trend lines. I wouldn't say that there was any, you know, certainly no deliberate decisions to hide the difficulty there. The trend lines changed, based on the number of appeals and the types of properties that are being appealed.
So, at that point in time, you're saying that was the most accurate information we had, then? Would that be a good characterization?
To my knowledge.
Okay. You mentioned something about a press secretary. Don't we have, isn't that what Abigail does, or she is?
I believe she's the Director of Communications, but this position would help her, along with many of our other departments that have community outreach and, quite frankly, communications needs. There's things that come out of the jail, our Health Department, our Department of Economic Development, every single day, that I believe that position would help support.
Okay, so, that's a new position?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You also mentioned about the federal inmates, lost revenue from the federal inmates. Can you expand upon that?
Yes, so, we receive revenue based on the federal inmates that are housed at our county jail. I don't have all the statistics in front of me, but many years ago, let's say it was 50 or 100 inmates, and again, don't quote me on that, right now, it's much, much less. So, we are not receiving federal reimbursement for those inmate stays at our county jail. And that is all based on the per diem rate that the president judge spoke to, the $177 a day. That is the reimbursement rate that we would receive when we do have federal inmates housed in our jail. Just, they are not there. I'm not sure exactly where they're being sent to, but again, they're currently not in our county jail.
What do we need to do to get that revenue back?
I don't have that answer at this time. I'm happy to talk to the jail administration to look into it.
You could look into it, because I...
Absolutely.
$2 million a year, I mean, that's not chump change.
It's significant.
Okay. Yeah, if we could look into that, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys. I mean, I know it's, I mean, I'm not beating you guys up. I know it's incredibly difficult where we're all at at this point in time, and we just need to find a path forward, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you both for all the work you've been doing, and thank you for, you know, playing it straight. I have to say, not to be impolitic, but when I came in here this evening, the only catastrophe I was hoping to avoid in the short term was next Tuesday. But you might want to strike that from the record. So, I guess my question is, with respect to the proposed 2.2 mil increase, so, will that allow you to keep treading water, or will you be in a position to maintain with that?
The 2.2 mils gets us a healthy five-year budget that maintains county services and allows us to invest what we need to invest in fund The budget proposal does not include, you know, massive new programs, it does not include, you know, major transformations to city, or excuse me, county departments. It does include, like I said, investments in DHS that allow us to take advantage of the full amount of the match funding. It includes funding for programs like ACCM and ERAP. You know, it includes a number of smaller initiatives that we think are important for the health of the county. But I believe this is a no-frills budget. Any reduction over 2.2 will involve cuts.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear that, because the question I was going to follow up with is, is there a chance that you might have to come back next year and make another similar request? But you're taking the longer view and looking out for at least the next five years. The other question is, I mean, it looks like, you know, in trying to find or trying to figure out, what can we, where can we consolidate? Where, if any, might we encounter some, you know, waste in the budget? It seems that, you know, you've leaned on, you know, the sheriff's office, the DA's office, public defender, two courts, to really take a look at what their, you know, essential, critical needs are. And in each case, I believe the courts reported on Monday that, you know, a 10% reduction in their budget would, I think, be catastrophic. Or, I mean, it would really make it very, very difficult for them to perform their essential functions. So, are you accepting what we've, you know, received here in the testimony of all of those entities as credible and real?
Yeah, I believe they're accurate. I think when the row offices report to you that a 10% reduction would be simply impossible for them to manage, I think that they're being truthful with the council.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Cosman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say this. First of all, why we've started screwing around with a 46% increase in taxes when it was 2.2 mils? You guys didn't project this thing and put it out there very well, as far as I'm concerned. The optics are terrible, absolutely terrible. And I fault you guys for that, because it should have been rolled out at 2.2 mils, not 46% increase. That scared the hell out of people. And I want to tell you another thing. I represent an area District 6. I have people with $300,000, $400,000 homes, and I have people that can barely afford to live. How am I going to go back to Claret and say, "We're going to increase your taxes by 2.2%"? It's only going to cost you another $1,500, or what the hell it is, a year or a month. You know what, guys? That's the biggest flaw in this whole presentation, the way it was rolled out. Shame on you for the way it was rolled out. It should have never been sent out this way. And I want to tell you, you're going to have one hell of a time getting enough 10 votes to get some of this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Cosman Paul Mary. Nita.
I have one more question, so thank you for the presentation, and I did learn a lot from my colleagues, and I'm looking forward to our wonderful...
Thank you, Cosman. Cosman Walton, sorry about that.
Thank you, manager and director. This has been a long night, and I appreciate your candor and sharing the information that you've done. And it has been really helpful. I don't have any particular questions. I will share my concerns and my priorities in the appropriate session, because my priorities very well may not lie with the individuals that you've chosen to meet with and negotiate with, attempt to negotiate with before. You got to get to 10, and if my issues aren't addressed, I'm not supporting it. It's just that simple. I have concerns, I have priorities, my constituents have concerns, and I have to extract what I have to extract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Chapkus, are you still on the phone?
I am. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to everyone who presented this evening. I appreciate your time. A few questions. The first question is, so, the resounding question that I've been getting, and I suspect many of my colleagues through email online, it has been, how do we move forward with this if we are living on a fixed income? And so, I wanted to pose that question to all of you for a response, because that is a question that continues to keep coming up from constituents in my district, is how can I move forward with fixed income with this type of millage increase?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Let us, and, you know, I think as you've heard, there are some questions we're going to need to take just a little bit of time and write a response to. Can you let us ruminate on that and get back to you in the next couple of days?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
My next question is, has there been an analysis, so, Councilmember Klein had talked about consolidation, and so, my question is a little bit similar in that, has there been an analysis to look at any duplication of services internally within the county and then externally with all of various partners and collaborators that the county works with? So, has there been some type of analysis to say, oh, you know, there's a little bit of a duplication over here, so perhaps we don't need as much funding to go to that particular area?
Thank you, Councilwoman. As the county manager alluded to, we do monthly forecasts in the budget office. The budget process itself is really a six-month process, so we're always looking for those duplication of efforts. We're always looking to try to find savings. So, the short answer is yes. Again, we thought this was an honest budget, but really, to answer your question, yes, we are trying to find any duplication of effort that's in this budget so that we can maximize savings.
Thank you. Does this budget reflect, as you all know, it had been sent back to committee, but does this budget make an assumption and reflect the potential increase in the air permit fees? Or is that assuming that that doesn't get approved?
The budget proposal does reflect an assumed increase in the permit fees, and so, if that legislation does not move forward, that will be an impact on the budget proposal.
Okay, thank you. And then, last but not least, there has been, and a couple of constituents had asked this question as well, in terms of revenue generation, is the county on top of going after those who perhaps owe back taxes that have yet to be paid?
Yes, happy to report that by working with the Controller's Office and Treasurer's Office, that's something that's always important to us, collecting on those delinquent taxes. And I see the Treasurers in the room tonight, and that's something I could commit to, Councilwoman, that will be a priority of ours moving forward. In addition to that, we've looked at other revenue sources. We looked at all countywide fees earlier this spring, so really, we're really trying to make sure no rock is unturned. We understand the importance of this and understand the importance of generating additional revenues as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, County Manager Fournier, as well as Director Cox for being here today and that extensive presentation. Got three questions for you today. The first one, on Slide 22, it shows an increase in expenditures of about 14%. Previously, the county executive had reported that this budget would reflect a 3% increase in spending. Can you just enlighten me on the difference of those two numbers, am I misunderstanding what Slide 22 is transmitting?
So, the 13.8% speaks to our operating budget, Councilman. The 3% refers to the total budget, which includes our grants, capital, operating and special revenue accounts.
Understood. Thank you very much.
But if I may add to that, Councilman?
Sure.
A good portion of that increase, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Cox, but it reflects a transfer of funds into fund balance.
True.
Is that correct? So, you're not, that's not like a, we're hiring 13.8% more people or engaging in 13.8% more contracts. A big part of that 13.8% is transferred to fund balance to replenish it. A big part of that 13.8% is transferred to fund balance to replenish it.
Understood, thank you. And that kind of piggybacks nicely into my second question. There'd already been a couple council members that alluded to, you know, on being unlikely to support this current millage increase. Just out of curiosity, what would the rough millage rate need to be to increase the budget such that it's balanced, but such that it would not restore the fund balance that was drawn down in previous years? And if you can't, if you don't have that number offhand, that's totally fine.
Sure. No, no, that's, I think that's the important question, right? The county executive's proposal remains at 2.2 because that's what we need to avoid impactful cuts. I'll reiterate what I said at the beginning of this evening, which is, if we can get to a point where we're speaking to the council in the same ballfield here, I think that there are discussions that can be had to find a number that works.
Right. I mean, just to be clear, that, that number is both to avoid impactful cuts and to restore the existing fund balance. I obviously understand the detriment of not restoring that fund balance and the potential impact it could have on our credit rating, and I don't discount those negative factors in any way, shape, or form. I'm just trying to, to see possible ways in which we could, you know, eventually reach an amicable conclusion here.
I, I appreciate that question, thank you.
Okay, and then the last question I have, and this is one that I have gotten from quite a number of constituents, so felt compelled to ask it here. I know this is something that the city has been looking into more, but the, the nonprofit status of some of our largest nonprofits in the area, and you know who those are, has there been any consideration by the county of challenging that nonprofit status, or trying to get additional funding in some way, shape, or form from, from those large organizations?
I am going to defer that question to the county executive's office, and I don't mean that to be a cop-out, but that's a, that's a follow-up conversation that we can have with them, okay?
Understood, that's all the questions I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'll go right down the road. Nick, any more questions?
Not necessarily a question, but another comment, thank you. Moving forward, I would strongly suggest that you give us quarterly reports instead of coming into us in October and telling us what the budget is. If you'd let us, you know, know during the course of the year where we're standing, where we stand, I, I think that would be something great for the future, because we did get reports from the Controller's Office many times when they were telling us the fund balance was going down like this my first term. So I think it might make things better for council members to be more informed of a quarterly report as to what's going on in the year 2025. I think that'd be a great idea.
Councilman, I totally agree. We understand the importance of transparency and communication with you all, so I just want to let you know that we are actually posting quarterly reports on the Budget Office website now. It shows budget and year-to-date actuals. If you're looking for additional information, let us know, but we are starting to post that, because we understand the importance as well.
Yeah, well, we didn't know to look, so specifically notify us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna, again, information asking about, on Page 22, Slide 22, Department 46, non-departmental expenditures, the increase was 637%. I think I know what 33 of that million is gonna be, but can you tell us what is the other? Or tell us what that fund, what that expenditure represents, please?
Yes, so 33 million obviously makes up the majority of that increase, but if you recall, Councilwoman, last year, there were multiple council amendments, CCA sees increased money, jail uniforms, many others. That money was taken from the non-departmental budget. So that 6 million looking at as a beginning is artificially low, that runs around 13 million typically. That pays for our TIF expenses, property insurance, general liability insurance, settlements around this county. So again, we had to put that back to the appropriate number.
Okay. And then my, my final question would be, as I'm looking at the grant details and the funding sources for 2025, there's something that pops up a lot, which is the foundation and other initiatives, and in the description, it says grant funding, and at the end, the operations of the ACOME. And I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know what ACOME is.
It's the Medical Examiner's Office. I'm sorry, it's the Allegheny County Office of Medical Examiner. And probably on one of those previous pages, or the acronym is actually spelled out.
Okay, okay, so, but the foundation and other initiatives itself contributes to more than just the medical examiner's office, right? That also pops up in the children initiatives and, right?
Please.
Those would be, so each department could potentially be getting foundation dollars from different foundations.
Okay.
Each one of them gets an allocation line. It's not a collective, because each department would have specific needs and the specific grant conditions, and, you know, it could be, Pittsburgh Foundation would be Heinz Endowments...
Well, no, Heinz Endowment has their own. This line itself is...
So those would be grants that perhaps like have been applied for, but we haven't been awarded yet.
Okay.
Whereas those other grants that are specifically outlined, we have an award for, and they're currently spending those grants down.
But some of those amounts are $8 million, $3 million, I mean, those are large amounts of, of money that we would like to, if we could, please see some of the details on those.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. We'll, we'll make sure we provide that to you.
Thank you so much. I'm done.
Thank you. President Katina.
Just two, two last questions, and I don't need answers tonight. Sorry.
It's okay.
Can, can you guys let me know what the total assessed value of all the property exempted from the taxation to the terms of the, of the institutions of the Purely Public Charity Act that Councilman Grisbeck mentioned? And obviously, how much tax revenue is the county foregoing due to the exemption and abatement programs, such as the Homestead, Farmstead Exclusion, Residential Visibility Design Tax Credit Clean and Green Program, et cetera? And then, how much revenue, if any, is generated by payment via lieu of tax agreements? Are there any plans for expanding payment in lieu of tax agreements? And what is the status of the county's parcel review as required by the ordinance? So, thank you. Thank you again, guys.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
No other questions. Thank you.
Councilman Paul Berry.
No other questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Brizio. I think that's a wrap. I want to thank you guys and your team, obviously, for being here all night, all day, and all the work. We're gonna work through this. We appreciate being so transparent and answering our questions, and everyone, have a good evening. Thanks for staying around.